Recording in progress.
Everybody ready? Well, good evening and welcome to the October 3rd meeting of the Federal Way City Council. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see everybody. Got a very special council meeting. We're going to start it off with a very special event. When I became mayor, just about 10 years ago now, we started a program about the key to the city. And it's one of the very special things we get to do where we honor people who have made a tremendous impact in our community. Today, we are here to give the key to the city to Kristen Speekman. Let's give her a big round of applause. And in fact, actually, why don't I go down there? And also, we have all of the individuals who helped her, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. So let me bring my key, or actually Kristen's key. All right. How do we turn this thing on? All right. Kristen, you want to join me real quick? Well, I just want to say, first of all, I think it's really important that some of us have ideas about, you know, a fleeting idea about we can help with this, or we can help with that. And, you know, in our minds, either as we're driving around town, or we're thinking about ways that we can improve our community. You know, oftentimes, we'll think about those things, and we'll think about, well, gosh, there's this, and there's that, and there's complications, and there's expenses, and do I really have the time? And Kristen did something so special. She is really one of the great people in our community. She gives back a lot. She owns Bella Red Salon, and not only here, but also in Bonnie Lake. And she had this idea to be able to provide free haircuts for kids in the Federal Way School District, and to be able to bring a team together. Well, there are 23,000 children, students, in the Federal Way School District. That's a little bit daunting. But how do you do anything, and anything of a big project? You do discernible bites, right? You say, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And what she decided to do is just make that leap and reach out. She contacted me in my office and said that she was thinking about this, and we just took the ball and together, joined arms, and ran with it. And we've got some great pictures here, and I think really it was one of those things where, I just have to tell you that there were several council members that were there. But if you could see the line, we were at Town Square Park. It was right before school started, and we were trying to pick just the right day. And there were other folks, I think the Boys and Girls Club did a haircut on the Saturday before. So we didn't want to compete with other events. But there were hundreds of people who showed up, you know, young people and their parents. And, you know, they looked a little shaggy when they were first getting in the line, and it really backed up. But you should have seen the, really the skip in their step, and the sparkle in their eyes, these young kids, when they got done with their fresh haircut. You remember what it was like when you started a new school year? And the kids looked like, you know, like fresh new pennies that were ready to, had a bounce in their step. And it was really one of those things where I thought, this is exactly what a key to the city and what exactly we want to foster. But it wasn't just Kristen. It was all of her, what was it, about 60?
About 60, yeah.
60 individuals that she was able to get. They're here with us today. And you're going to get to meet them, and we're going to pass out certificates, and we're going to have a chance for Kristen to speak when I stop talking here in a minute. That's hard to do, right, everybody? But I can tell you this, that it was a great moment in our city. And it was a great moment of coming together, and hundreds of people, hundreds of young people got their haircut. And, you know, this was really out of the goodness of their heart, they did this. And I want to thank our Parks Director and the Park Staff for making Town Square Park available, and the tent, and the chairs. But it really, it's what community is about. And I say this a lot, Kristen and everybody, you know, I grew up in a small town. I grew up in Yelm. And when I got to college, somebody says, "I bet the tallest building in your town was a water tower." And he admitted it because of his joke, but there's something about a small-town feel where people take care of each other, and they really look after each other. And there are times in which, whether it's the farmer's market or this event, where Federal Way sometimes feels not like the 10th largest city in the state, but like a small town in the best sense of the word. And so, on behalf of a grateful community, I wanted to give Kristen Speekman the key to the city.
Wow, pretty cool. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jim Farrell. Thank you, everybody, for the recognition. I appreciate being honored for having a great idea. But I think it's very important to say that, like, I had an idea. And if there's any takeaway here, I want you all to remember that if you have big ideas to serve others, share it. Share it with people. Share it with a friend, because it's powerful to have a big idea and share it. It's even more powerful to have 60 people say, "I want to in on your idea, and I want to be part of it too." So I really want to highlight the volunteers. I want to highlight Castaway Salon. Unfortunately, Susan Greenside is the owner there. She couldn't be here. Her family's here today. She was instrumental behind the scenes. I have barbers from shops in the area, stylists that did their third haircutting event doing this event. And I'm just so grateful. And I just want to share one thing with the council, and that's a quote that I said at the beginning of our hair cutting event to the volunteers, and it was a Maya Angelou quote. And it was talking about, people will remember, people will forget what you say, people will forget what you do, but they won't forget how you feel, how you make them feel. And I think that's what was really powerful about what we were able to deliver for the community on a really big scale. So thank you for all the volunteers. Thank you to the city, the Parks Department, David Solano. Everybody was so instrumental in making this a successful event, and I'm really excited for this to happen again next year.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, yes, you still need me.
Okay, now. And David, let's do pictures. We'll have everybody come up. Now, I don't know if you've talked to everybody, but after you get your diploma, after you get your certificate, let's have you, we'll start lining up people over there where Brian is, and we'll just, you know, kind of mirror the dais. And then hopefully we'll get room up there for all of you, so kind of squeeze in, then we'll take a big picture when we're done.
Yeah, we'll take a photo after, so that's why we want the line to start.
Okay. And do you want to call them out?
Sure. This is Sarah Bell. Are we going to do photos with everybody?
Yes, let's do that.
Let's do it!
Okay, so when everybody comes up. Okay, here we go. Here we go.
Let's put you in the middle.
All right.
Okay, we're going to figure this out. And Sarah Bell is from Castaway Salon. Tiana Bishop. Tiana is my operations manager. Yes? Am I photo bombing their photo?
No, you're supposed to be in front of it. Everyone's going to get a copy of their picture.
Tiana's son, Kalal Bishop.
Kalal, Superman's father.
Yes? Thank you. Kalal's sister and an apprentice in my salon, Ozzy Lee Bishop. This is so fun. Stylist in my salon, Shai Castro, is it Oya? Oya. Ryanna Cook, one of my longtime friends and supporter of my salon. And her daughter, Arrow Cook. I love the families that have participated too. I think that's super cool. Gilton East Easterling. It's my dad.
Thanks, East.
This is going up in your barber shop. Susan Secondhand, her husband Zach Greenside. I should have got the whole family, because Sebastian Greenside and Joseph Greenside. We'll get you guys together. My first cheerleader and volunteer in life, my mom and my dad, Sherry Lamb and Darian Lamb. Bella Red Stylist, Janay Lasky. Another stylist in my salon, Melanie Mirabelle. My manager in Bonnie Lake, Luann Rogers. Did I do that again? I would know at the end. Tupper Cotton Stylist at my salon. Stylist in my salon, Liv Harkness. Associate Stylist in my salon, Alex Lex Rojas. Stylist at Bella Red, Vinnie Rossetto. Jessie Selsler. This picture is going to be epic. Reinhold Shuck. Celeste Trahio. Stylist at Bella Red. My yes to everything that I ask for, my GM Jessie Wentz. Stylist at Federal Way, Roslin Wright.
She cuts my son's hair.
We have certificates for the other three. I swear you're on the list, but I probably lost them in the shuffle. It might be in somebody's hand. But I definitely want to honor Jose Morales. If you have somebody's name, please bring it up to me. Absolutely. Check your envelopes, guys. Jose, here you go. Thank you, Mel. I know everybody's name, so at least that's good. Castaway Stylist, Kaitlyn Ray. Maybe somebody has. The Miss Haley May Stylist in Bonnie Lake, you're getting a photo. I checked it twice. We didn't forget. No, no, we went over this list, checked it twice.
All right, thank you. Let's give them a big round of applause. Kristen, we've got some folks that could not make it tonight. This is an amazing group of people that did make it. There are several people that could not make it. So Kristen, would you like to call out their names? And then we've got the certificates for them. We're going to, we'll talk about how to get those to them.
Yeah, I'm going to personally, happily personally deliver them. I just want the council to know, this was a six-week planning for an event, and we were able to get over 40 hairstylists in the community to volunteer their time, and non-hairdoing volunteers totaling over 60 people. So, the people that could not come, the amazing list I will read off. Jayana Davis, Cara Forward, Susan Greenside, Max Hale, Emery Herbert. Some of these are in salon right now, doing hair right now for people in the community. Toby Johnson, Kelsey Johnson, Jamie. Jamie. Jess Clemente, Dylan Knighton, Chloe Lamb, Clara Lamb, Sandra Lamb, Peyton Lawson, Megan Maxson, the amazing Nikolai Mercer, who came from Pauls Bow to cut hair, Chelsea Nelson, Morgan Oliver, Yasenia Perez, Stephanie Rivera, Castaway Stylist Joy Sendigala, Heather Smith, Brittany Stecklenberg, Vanessa Valdez, Vernice Vargas, Laney Vernig, and Alicia Wood.
All right, everybody. Now, David and Kealan, we're going to need, Kealan, a reporter with the Federal Way Mirror, is present and taking photographs. We're going to defer to you guys in regard to how we capture this in pictures, like a big group picture. What do you think, Dave? While they figure that out, remember, the most important thing is there's cake afterwards. So, no, the most important thing is to say thank you. We're really blessed to have you here, and thank you so much for all that you did that day, and to continue to do in our community. We're going to have a brief reception about 10 minutes afterward. So we're going to take the picture, and then break, and there's cake in the back.
The last thing I want to say is, City Council Susan Honda has been a huge support of our salon, our business, our community events, and she even volunteered her own time at our event, and I'm really grateful.
Okay, David, how do you want to do this?
Why don't you move this chair?
Yep, we're good.
And scoot.
We'll center on you, Linda. You're the center.
Whatever.
I need a high chair.
Yeah, I was going to say, I need to get behind a short person.
Why are you so tall?
Come on, there we go.
Of course I'm taller than my best. I'm taller than Jack and Jack. I'm tall.
You want to switch?
No, it's okay, it's okay.
We're good, we're good, we're good.
Are you taking a picture?
Okay, everybody, we'll have a brief reception until 5:00 after. Please enjoy some refreshments.
Can I get you down for the next round?
You were talking about a couple...
Okay, everybody, let's get back to work.
You should've seen Ryan's face when you said that. Linda, you should've seen Ryan's face when you said that.
I'm seventy-nine.
Yeah, but you should've seen when you asked him. Okay? It's not something we're allowed to ask.
No, I will remake that, I got to school soon.
Recognize Christine Reeves?
Will do. I'm gonna recognize Christine before we do the moment of silence.
I give you permission.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. I do want to recognize a very special friend of Federal Way. We've got State Representative Christine Reeves in the back. Thank you. The good representative has been very helpful in thinking about how we're going about our legislative strategy. We'll be sharing that. I know that the council is putting together an ad hoc committee. But Representative, thank you so much for the work you do in Olympia, and for just being a friend of Federal Way. Thank you. Okay, last week, we had the passing of a dear friend of Federal Way, my friend and many, and the friend of many here in our community, Bob Kellogg Senior, passed away last week. And for those who know him, knew, he had a big heart, a lot of service in the community. He was a former Parks Commissioner, he was a longtime member of Kiwanis. I'm gonna have, ask the Deputy Mayor to say a few words. Bob was really a dear friend, and I had been involved in Federal Way, and Federal Way politics, and governance, over 30 years. Bob was one of the very first people I ever met in Federal Way, after returning here from college and law school. I want to tell just a really, Bob was a great family man. He and Marilyn were married, I don't know how many years, decades. They moved up here from Portland. He was really one of those people that was there at every major gathering in our community. But there was something that he was really involved in, that has been really sort of an untold story. And when you get done with this meeting tonight, I'd ask you maybe to go into the lobby here, and take a look at when we dedicated the flag, the big flag on 320th, back on November 11th of 2014, 11:11 at 11:00 a.m., to celebrate the end of, when Veterans Day started, which was honoring World War I. And Bob, six months before, was, had set up a meeting with me in my office. And I just want to give a context, how one person can change, really, the direction of some, of a community, and have such an impact. I remember where, exactly where I was, it was probably about June of 2014. I'd only been mayor for about six months. And I remember walking through the gate, and I was about to go into this room that Bob was in, and our Public Works Director, and I knew that Bob wanted to put a big flag on 320th. And I was already, in my mind, as I was walking into that conference room, I said, I was trying to think of ways to say politely, "No," and all the reasons why, "No." And I had made up my mind, and because of whether it was gonna get hit, or other issues, and isn't there somewhere else we could put it? And I was in that room for probably about five minutes. Bob brought these pictures of what it could look like. And it wasn't just a flag by itself in the middle of 320th. It was all the little flags that lined 320th, and created this promenade, and created a real sense of location, and destination, and honoring our American flag. And if you, when you go, whether you're at the, just getting off the freeway, and looking westbound, or if you clear the Safeway area, and you're kind of on a high spot, you could see the big flag, and all of the smaller flags lining. And as soon as I saw the renderings that he did, I immediately turned into a yes. And then it was a matter of how we were gonna do it. Bob was there, and if you go, it's about midway in the hallway, he's there with our longtime friend Pete Von Reichbauer, along with United States Senator Patty Murray, and who's a big supporter of our veterans and our veteran community. And we had thousands of people. We literally closed 320th, and had a big posed picture of several thousand people, and probably one of the coldest days I can, that I can recall. But apart from that, Bob was really a great family person, a great donor to the community, and he was a friend. And so, we lowered the, we lowered the flag on 320th to honor Bob. And a distinction I think we've only done locally here once before, when State Representative Roger Freeman passed away unexpectedly and tragically. It was to honor our friend Bob. With that, I think the Deputy Mayor wanted to say a few words.
Thank you. So I'm gonna read something I wrote about Bob. Bob joined the Federal Way Kiwanis Club on October 31st of 1984. He served in many positions and roles, even as President of the club. He modeled the mission and values of Kiwanis every single day. He was a positive influence on our community, and he believed in serving our community each and every day. Kiwanis, as an organization, Kiwanis is dedicated to improving the world, one child and one community at a time. And Bob worked really hard to improve our community, Federal Way, for all children and all families. He was also a very proud veteran. He worked for years on creating a Veterans Memorial in Federal Way. So for many, many years, probably 15, 20 years ago, the Historical Society of Federal Way and the Kiwanis Club of Federal Way had an idea to create a Veterans Memorial here in the city. And they worked really hard at that. They came up with the plan, it's pretty extensive, it's quite amazing. It was going to be a large garden area, and each section of the military, Army, Navy, would have their own row of roses, or whatever it was, that would be planted. And the idea was that it would be a place where veterans and their families, and anyone in the community could come and sit, could come and work, whatever they wanted to do in the garden. We were promised a couple spots. We needed quite a bit of land to make this happen. The two spots we were promised never came through. But I'm proud to say that we do have a Veterans Memorial in Federal Way, and Bob Kellogg has served on that committee for, I think it's been five years since we've been working. And I was proud to serve along with him on that committee, and proud to be in the Kiwanis Club with him. I've learned a lot from him, I'm gonna really miss him, and my prayers are with his family. So, he was really, truly a special man, and he made Federal Way a better place. He loved this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
I also, you may not know this, but with Celebration Park, when we were putting up a flag at Celebration Park, the flag we put up was not large enough for Bob. So we had to take it down and put up a larger flag. So if you go to Celebration Park, you can see the flag there. But there is a dedication plaque at the bottom of it, and it actually is to folks in the garden club who help take care of the garden in that area. And it's a place to sit and reflect. So, thanks to Bob.
Let's have a moment of silence for our friend Bob. All right, thank you. All right, all right, now let's transition to Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. And first, we promised at the last council meeting, we had heard some comments from the public, and folks that lived on Steel Lake. And the very next week, first thing in the morning, Kevin Do, myself, and EJ, got out on the boat, and Kevin, make sure to tell them how tenuous that motor was toward the end. We were all the way on the far side, and the motor was just about ready to give up. I wondered whether we were gonna have to get out and push that thing. But anyway, Kevin, give the report, please.
Yeah, the battery was running low, so the motor was running at half-power, and we're like, oh, I might have to paddle.
We made it.
Yeah, we made it back, thankfully. Just in time for the all-city meeting. All right, so, my name's Kevin Do, Water Quality Program Supervisor for Public Works, and I'm here to talk about the status of Steel Lake, based on the concerns we heard from the previous council meeting. So the first thing I want to touch on is the aquatic vegetation of the lake. So here's a survey that the contractor for the Lake Management District did back in June. So they went around the lake, and they took a survey of the plants around the coastal area of the lake. And so they identify nauseous weed plants. So the two plants they identified was yellow flag iris and white water lily. These are two Class C nauseous weeds, meaning the county has the authority to either require their control. These two are not. So this is what the yellow flag iris looks like, and they're native to Europe, Northern Africa, and Mediterranean, a few locations. And the problem with them is, if livestock animals eat them, they can cause illness. And if you get, if it's resin on your skin, it causes skin irritation. And you can see all the yellow dots here, that's the yellow flag iris. They're usually in... in single, single colonies over in residential lawns. And this is the white water lily, and these are, you can see the green dots mostly in the west portion, northwest portion of the lake. And these are basically native to eastern America, and basically the problem they cause is that they can cause entanglement for people who swim, and then the motors, and they're a great habitat for mosquitoes, because the stagnant water gets in the lily pads and mosquitoes grow. And I know, I wanted to address the milfoil in the, in the middle of the lake too that someone had a concern about. And you know, that can be controlled, usually when they hire this contractor, they usually go around the coastal area, but that can be brought to the advisory committee when they have their public meeting, and they can vote upon, consider it for action and vote upon it. And so people love to fish at Steel Lake, so I just want to provide some stats about the fish at Steel Lake. The fishing period is from May to October, official wildlife, official wildlife stockage with rainbow trout, about eight to twelve thousand since two thousand and six, and recently in two thousand and thirteen, they stocked ten thousand, and some other species, the bullhead, the bass, and the perch, and another fish right below, behind that, the sunfish. And these are all, these are all fish that like to live in moderately bioproduptive lakes, which means like they like to live in lakes that have a mild, moderate aquatic life, aquatic plants in the bottom of the lake. And so another issue was water quality, you know, what do we measure for, what's, is there a problem? And so for the Lake Management District, we sample, we sample water from the lake, we bring it to King County Labs, they analyze it, we bring it back to us, and we process the data. So we measure for temperature, dissolved oxygen, how much oxygen in the water for fish, and the aquatic life that live, nutrients, nitrogen, phosphorus, secudis, which is basically how clear the lake is, drop down secudis until it disappears, you can't see anymore, you measure that fecal coliform, specifically e coli. And so the primary, so the threshold for freshwater lakes for primary contact is a hundred colony forming units per a hundred milliliters, and the highest ice units is twenty-fourteen, is sixteen, and usually it ranges between one and five. And chlorophyll A, which is a representation of how bioproduptive the lake is, it's a great, it's a great measurement for how much algae may grow. And they also ID the algae species, and they give us a dominant and subdominant species. And so a lot of this algae, you know, that's what came up from this, you know, algae striations, so a good way to measure algae bioproductivity is through the tropic state index. And so that's something that a lot of lakes around here to use to measure the bioproductivity of algae, best, you can calculate through multiple variables, chlorophyll is the best representation. And you can see, this is the data, each line's a different year, two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and twenty-two. And from May to October, you can see a slight trend going up, which means the higher the number, the more bioproduptive it is, which means more algae is likely to grow. And that's when we usually see like the growth of the striations in the algae from July, August, you know, September. And so what do these numbers mean, you know, from two thousand and twenty-two, the low looks like around thirty, and the highs almost around the verge of fifty. So here's a little table about it. So usually the lake ranges around forty to fifty, meaning it's mesotrophic, meaning that it's moderately bioproduptive on algae. Once, and it's on the, so once towards the end of that, towards October, it gets around fifty, which means it's on the verge of being utrophic, which means a lot of algae growth. That's what, that's what we want to prevent, we definitely want to prevent it from getting to sixty to seventy, that's when it gets the blue-green algae dominant, and that's what creates the neurotoxins, which, you know, Steel Lake usually ranges from thirty-five to fifty, they don't usually get above that. And then, so this all leads to algae blooms, you know, we measure all this bioproductivity because we want to measure how likely algae blooms are gonna happen. And so what causes them, what harm do they cause, and how do you prevent them? So algae blooms are called the excess nutrients, potential sources of stormwater runoff and fertilizer, people making their lawns green and their plants, wastewater from like maybe septic tanks or sewage overflows, and the environment they like to grow in is warm water, shallow depths, and slow-moving water. So you usually, that's why you usually see these striations of algae at the photo below in between docks, that's where it's shallow water, it's warm water, and that's where the algae likes to grow. And so what harm can they cause? Well, if you get just normal algae blooms, they, so what, when algae grows, it blooms, it dies, it decomposes, it uses up the oxygen in the lake, therefore the fish can't breathe, and that's how they die. And so that's what we want to prevent, right? We don't, we want those full-on blooms. And on the other side, you get blue-green algae blooms, that's when the neurotoxins start to come out. But we tested for neurotoxins a few weeks ago, it's well below the criteria for recreation. And so how do you prevent this? Or there's some, there's some, a couple of methods, physical removal, where you put an actual pump in the lake, will filter out all the algae, and basically you can reboot the algae, therefore removing the algae, removing the nutrients. Or you can do nutrient management, limiting nutrients here in western Washington, the lakes is usually phosphorus, so that's what the algae wants in order to proliferate and grow profusely. And so that's what you want to prevent for them to get. So there's a, there's a nutrient management method where you put modified clay where it binds to the phosphorus and locks it in, therefore making it not bioavailable to the algae, therefore not allowing it to bloom. So how do you get involved? So you can apply to be a part of Steel Lake Management Advisory Committee. As you may know, we are reforming, in the process of reforming the Lake Management District, therefore you can apply, and we'll be sending out notices for all the pay assessments around late, late October, early November, you apply, you go before, interview before council, and you can be a part of the advisory committee. Or if you don't want to be part of the advisory committee, we encourage you to go to the public meetings that they have every year, at least they have at least four. The Q4 meeting is on November seventh, the Hall of Fame Room, City Hall, four to five thirty PM. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Sorry, there's a lot of information to cover.
You know what, Kevin, would you, no matter what, actually, can you stick around for a little while and for some of the residents that live, that have concerns, or like me, need a little more, you know, explanatory, explanation of what some of the verbiage means and what some of the, you know, science means?
Sure, no problem.
Okay.
Happy to stick around.
I'm having a hard time getting that out of my mouth there, but if you could stick around in the back, and for the folks, we don't do question and answer from the audience, you guys, just, just the way we run our meetings, but Kevin's gonna be in the back of the room, and also, if, if we get done with the meeting tonight, and you still have unanswered questions, shoot an email to me, or, and make sure, Kevin, did you bring cards?
I did, I have one card.
You're like me, or you guys, you know our email addresses, shoot us an email, we'll get it to Kevin, we'll make sure we'll get you answers, we work for you. So that's why immediately we went out there to take a look at it, we're gonna, we're gonna get you everything you need to address this. All right, Council, Councilmember?
Just one thing, just a matter of clarification, you talked about applying for the, the Lake Management District, you need to be a property owner there on the lake to be eligible for that, correct?
Correct, you have to be paying assessment.
Okay, just so that everybody here recognizes that.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So Mayor, I'm wondering if any of the people in the audience, if they want to make something public, they can go to the podium during public comment?
Thank you, yeah, that's, exactly, yes. If you haven't filled out a pink sheet yet, please do so, and we'll have you come up, and then you can make your question known for the, to the public. Councilmember McDaniel?
A couple of questions, you had mentioned two options for the algae blooms, was the clay and a pump, do you have any, what costs might be associated with those two, I'm guessing pump would be more expensive, or?
Pump would be very expensive, because you have to manage the power as well.
Okay.
So the clay would probably be more the practical method, but that would be, hey, you probably have to consult with the, their contractor, because that's something they recommended, but they didn't give us a price.
Okay, so that's something we'd have to get priced for to find out even if that's a viable option too?
Absolutely.
Okay, and the other one was, is it milfoil?
Yeah, Eurasian milfoil, yeah.
Yeah, so on that one right there, is that one that was, like you said, since it's in the middle, it wasn't picked up on the survey for lack of a term? And then if that is picked up and that was something that you wanted to deal with, what would be, I might have missed that, what was the solution for that particular?
See, that was something I'll have to, we have to ask the contractor, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's in the deeper portion of the lake, so it might be hand removal by diving, but you know.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? All right, Kevin, thank you, remember cards next time.
Yeah.
You did a great job, thank you, and he's gonna be back in the, in the back of the room, and we'll make sure we answer your questions. Okay, next, got a Day Center update with Keith Niven, he's got all kinds of information to, you want to do it from there?
Is that okay?
Sure, yeah.
Awesome. I'm lazy, I sit here. So good evening, Mayor, City Council, Keith Niven, Community Development Director. So just to give you an update, what's happened since the last council meeting where we did a brief update on this as well. So city staff have been working on this matter daily, it comes up every day since we discussed this at the last council meeting. Specifically, city staff met with Catholic Community Services and the Day Center leadership on the twenty-seventh to address the ongoing complaints from the community near the Day Center and the proliferation of onsite camping. This meeting provided an opportunity for staff from the Police Department and Community Development Departments to discuss a number of ongoing issues with the staff from the Day Center. During this meeting, we discussed property boundaries, they were unclear as to where their property extended, specifically to the north. We addressed overnight camping, property maintenance, and whether or not Catholic Community Services would be willing to provide the city with a trespass letter. And what a trespass letter would allow Police Department to do would be to remove people from the property, especially after hours, and on weekends when the Day Center is closed. And so those are the things we've talked about, they indicated to us that they needed to talk about that amongst themselves, and so there's a follow-up meeting tomorrow with the Mayor's Office where we will talk about the next steps. And this is something the city's not gonna kind of back off of, we need to make some progress with this particular service within the city, and at a minimum, we believe that the Day Center must comply with the provisions of Federal Way Revised Code twelve thirty-five, which is permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, emergency housing and shelter licensing, and standards of conduct. And so that will be primary to the conversation we have tomorrow. And with that, that concludes my update.
Thank you. I also want to say the chief himself, and I don't want to speak for you, chief, if you have anything to add, but you went out there as well and talked with their leadership and asked them personally if you could get a trespass letter, is that correct?
Yes, in the meeting, the Catholic Community Service leadership, as well as Day Shift Management, told us their own policy prohibits overnight camping, however, they're not prepared to enforce that or ask the Police Department. We did ask that if they provided us with a trespass letter, that when they were, when the staff was not on site, if they were closed, or on weekends, we would ask people to move along, that they couldn't occupy the space. And their answer was they're not prepared to do that. So as a result of that, there's an encampment at the Day Center. From a law enforcement perspective, we have absolutely no authority to move people when the property owner says that the people can stay there. As you may recall, this goes back to when they had a fire, campfire that was occurring, a resident brought up a life safety concern, it was even at that time, they asked us not to remove the people from the property. So we did have a meeting, we gained some knowledge, and at this point, we're, we're not getting the assistance that we believe we need, and we're continuing to feel complaints from the business community, our community asking us to do something, so, and it's getting pretty loud, and we'd like to address it.
So again, the meeting tomorrow will be with myself, Brian Davis, Keith Niven, and representatives from Catholic Community Services and the Day Center. And we'll get the, previously, we have not fully applied the licensure, but that's a step we're going to take, and so we'll talk to them about that, which will require removal of the tents. So we'll, this is not allowed in Federal Way, so we'll, we'll take care of it, just let everyone know. Okay, so we'll meet tomorrow, that's, that's ongoing. Council, any questions about any of this? We'll keep you updated.
The only thing I'm concerned about is that elderly woman with the umbrella.
That's right.
Because she's so mentally ill.
Correct. Yes. Deputy Mayor?
So then the question would be, if the other campers are removed, could one stay? That would be a difficult question.
No.
No?
No. But we'll, we'll talk about it, we'll make sure there's referral services, but people don't, we can't, we can't do it.
It would be nice to be able to get housing for her, and get her into housing.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you Keith, and chief, and Brian, for your help on all this. Okay, we'll update the council, Stephanie, let's keep this on the agenda for next meeting, thank you. All right, next item, we've got the Mayor's, oh, we've got the food drive. So far, with the Mayor's Day of concern, and it's the Mayor and council, it's called the Mayor's Day, but I, council is committed to this, we've got the food drive at Fred Meyer this Saturday, Fred Meyer here in Twin Lakes, ten AM to two PM, you know, come one, come all, we need to make sure that we donate as much food as possible. I would say that the Multi-Service Center Food Bank, which is right next door to where we were talking about, is really a lifeline in this community. And when people, when new businesses or individuals say they want to donate in our community, that's the number one place I send them, because it really does, especially as we're now, we're heading into the cold months, we want to make sure that we help our friends and neighbors and, and people who need help. So so far, Waste Management has picked up, listen to this, two tons of food, four thousand three hundred and eighty-six pounds of food that has just been picked up so far from their deliveries. And so now, on, on top of that, this Saturday, we'll have the Fred Meyer event. So again, ten to two, and we'll, we'll be there, many of us will be there to assist with that, so thank you. And it benefits the Multi-Service Food Bank, and Waste Management just does a tremendous job, and they're great partners, and we really appreciate our friends at the Fred Meyer. Okay, now, upcoming events, or actually recent community events, we had the Walmart Grand reopening on Friday, September twenty-second, last Friday, we had the Taste of Federal Way at the Farmer's Market, September twenty-third, yes, that's my plate, I ate way too much, I always do, thanks Bill for helping me out a bit, it was great, a great event, long line, it was really one of the best. And next city council meeting, we're gonna be honoring and giving the key to the city to Rose Eel, who has had the Farmer's Market open for twenty years. We've got the financial literacy classes, Councilmember Dovi, you want to talk about that real quick?
Yeah, I'd love to talk about the literacy class. You know, this is an idea that came from the council to try to help people learn how to manage their finances better than maybe they learned in high school or college, or just from their friend. And we've been very fortunate to run this program, our average attendance has been fifteen people every meeting, we had twenty-three registered, we have nine volunteers led by Federal Way citizens, Paul Nordland, Rick Battersheld, and Jeff Wall that are teaching the class. We've been providing childcare, and two families have been using it, so that made it possible for them to come. And we've been, it's been attended by council members McDaniel and Esthafer Dawson, they've, may have some comments about the class, because they've been there helping. We're, this picture is one of the classes where they're being taught, they break into small groups, and we're, expenses for the class were one-third under budget. So it's been managed well of what we said we were gonna spend, which means that if we are forward-thinking for winter, we only have to come up with one, two-thirds of a cost to repeat the program again for another class. We've saved twenty percent on the cost materials, Bill Adino did a good job working with the volunteers and the company that supplies the curriculum, and it seems to be going well. I heard comments at the small groups, people enjoy getting together and talking about budgets and learning things that they hadn't thought about or learned before, and maybe, Paul or Lydia, do you have any comments, have you been kind of watching this? Don't want to put you on the spot.
No problem, no, I've, I've been to the first three so far, and I've actually enjoyed them, there's some stuff that I've learned on that, in the groups that I wouldn't have ever thought of, and I think the best aspect is, we start off with a video, and then we kind of talk about it, and then break off in the groups, and I've actually enjoyed the group, small group side of things more, because it can give you a little bit more personal, and you realize that if you think you have financial problems, almost everybody else in that room does too, so it's kind of nice to know that you're not the only one there. And then we also have some feedback, where people bouncing back ideas of what's helped them with stuff. So knowing that there's some success stories there, and some people who are at all different stages of the process have been very beneficial, and the vibe I get from the people there so far is they've enjoyed it, and they're learning something that potentially can change their lives, if not their children. And we have, we even have a lady who's bringing her fourteen-year-old son there, so she's done it, she's done it with her daughter once, and now she's bringing her son, so I think it's probably one of the best investments I've seen the city do in a long time.
All right, Councilmember Esthafer Dawson?
Yeah, and for me, you know, I had, I had concerns about the, about this particular curriculum, and yes, there are tools that are very beneficial, but one thing that was really good for me to be there was to see that during the discussion, we could bring up our concerns, and it was very, it was validated, and people were, like you said, bouncing back and forth about those concerns and ideas. And so I think the video could be a little harsh, for example, they said sixty-nine percent of millionaires who finish college don't have student For example, they said 69% of millionaires who finish college don't have student loans. But there's that word "millionaires" in there. And so it was not relatable for someone like me who did have student loans, right? So having those conversations, to say, yes, it works for some people, but not for others, and/or around credit cards, the importance of having credit cards for some people, and others may not need it. But understanding and having that dialogue in the, in the groups was very helpful. So I'm glad I'm attending, because I did have concerns, and I think those concerns are mitigated at least.
And one, one last comment I'd make. This is a program that's free to people in Federal Way to sign up and participate in. It's just another way, as we discussed here in this council, to offer human services on a different approach, not just, like we heard, the importance of the food bank, or the importance of rent assistance. This is for anybody that wants to get, it's a nine-week class, and get some more training in financial management. So it's open to Federal Way citizens. This was the, the first one. We still got six weeks to go, and hopefully, the council will move it ahead for a winter course based on the statistics. But thank you.
Thank you. And then Bill's going to provide an update on that with the leftover funds to go to that. So we'll, we'll get counsel that information. Okay. Moving on to upcoming events, we've got the Super Supper, the Community Caregiving Network that has been doing this for years. That's this Friday, October 6th, at 5:30 PM. And we don't have where that's at.
Christian Faith Center.
Christian Faith Center, that's right. It's not on there. So it's at the Christian Faith Center this Friday, 5:30 PM. And it's, it's just a great community event, and it helps those individuals in our community who really need it. And, okay, then we've got the Federal Way Arts Foundation Enchanted Celebration of the Arts, or enchant Celebration of the Arts, Saturday, October 14th, 6:00 PM, at the Performing Arts and Events Center. And then we've got the Multi-Service Center MSC Helps Luncheon, October 19th, 11:30 AM. I believe that is at the PAC. And Doug Baldwin, former Seahawk, will be there as a key speaker. Okay. That is, concludes my emerging issues and report. Now, we go to the most important part of the evening, which is public comment. Everybody gets three minutes. Green means go. Yellow means, you've got about 30 seconds, red means please stop, I hate interrupting people. All right. Everybody knows the rules, and just pay attention to your time. First, we have Wick, but if you're not into the whole brevity thing, we'll just refer to him as the Dude. Some may get that reference.
I'm just here to thank the city council, mayor, Parks Department. We're going to be doing a bicycle race on the 15th over here at the park. It's a bicycle, it's a cyclocross race. I've been doing it for 30 years. We've developed a lot of great junior riders that have gone on to be national champions. And we just want to thank you all for, for letting us do it. And we want to invite the mayor to come out and start some of our races for us, if that's a possibility.
Absolutely. I'll be there. I, I don't know if I'll, I'll get my, Jeffrey, if my, if I'm going to get my Dude sweater in time, but, but I'll definitely be there.
You can borrow mine.
All right. You got it. Thanks, man.
When is this?
It's the, it's the 15th, October 15th, Sunday.
At Celebration Park?
Celebration Park.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
For those who may not know, I'm probably one of the biggest, well, I'm the second biggest Lebowski fan in the room. Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. That's worthy of applause.
And you guys can all come out and see it, it's really fun. We're looking forward to it. So if you're on a Sunday, come out, it's really good to watch the kids. We have a news box race, all little kids, if you've got, you know, little kids wanting to go out, that's free. And juniors, really fast, and pretty exciting racing. So anyway, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, dude. All right. John Long.
I thought I was a big Lebowski fan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Moved on to Steel Lake in about 1996. And we woke up to a beautiful flower garden in our backyard. It was full of crawdads, snails, lots of baby fish. It was a nursery. None of us in our right mind would cut down, or want to cut down, all the rainforest, because we know how valuable that is. We know that lily pads create shade, especially in the shallows, and it keeps the water cool. What does algae grow in? Warm water, shallow water. What do we have now? An algae problem. If you just Google the benefits of lily pads, and you guys say they're non-native, but if you went around to all the lakes in the area, which I have done, because I'm a fly fisherman, I run into that white lily. Until you guys got a hold of North Lake, until they got a hold of Lake Geneva, and now we're, now we're growing algae over there. It's a problem that I would rather see us deal with in a natural way versus what we're doing, dumping chemicals. I don't want to dump chemicals. And in the middle of the lake, it's not milfoil. I know what milfoil is. The gentleman that did the study, if he would have just taken a rake out there, he would have said, he would have seen what that is. I'm not, I'm not a horticulturist, but I'm a person that cares about the environment we live in. I try to take care of that environment. I don't fertilize down by the water. I don't fertilize my lower at all. I rarely use a weed killer. I'll hit the weed directly. And I, I truly cherish that lake. It was a gem here in Federal Way. It's become an cesspool. You wouldn't have swam in my side of the lake. I live on the south side. The wind blows from the west, and it blows it all over to the south side of the lake. 308th, 304th, they don't see that stuff. So they can stand over there and say, the lake's great. It's all beautiful, it's fine. Where you guys went in that shallow, no one swims down there. Those lily pads are growing that tall. It's a shallow lake down there. What we had at ours was probably eight to 10 feet was maximum. I used to go out with my hoe, and I just rake the tops off. It keeps, I kept a nice little round circle for my grandkids to swim in, my kids when we first moved in. And I taught my grandkids how to snorkel, swim. I showed them the nursery. We used to have lots of bass in there. I don't know where they go. You say you planted bullfrogs. I don't know where they're at, because we used to have them right there on our beach, and they just, little tiny critters just swimming around. Kids loved it. I used to catch bullfrogs barehanded, show them to my kids, big bullfrogs. You hardly hear them croaking on there anymore. Those are things that I would call canary in the mines. There, there aren't any crawdads. I grew up picking up crawdads. I could catch hundreds of them. I can't catch three. I have a picture of myself holding native crawdads. They look like mini lobsters. And with that, I'll say, thank you. But I would really like us to consider doing something natural. And I don't see where that is a non-native lily pad.
All right. Thanks, John. Gary Smith. And then Jerry Knutson, Margaret Rayner, Susan Strong.
Should you have a problem understanding me have had some oral surgery, so please listen closely. I've only got three minutes. I've, 17 years ago, having lived around the country in business and so forth, retired before I was 60, and came back to Seattle where I was born. And I wanted to live on the lake, and I found the dumbest one I could find, and I put hundreds of thousands of dollars into it in order to make it look decent. It's the house on the very east end, and it, it's a big brown house. You've probably all seen it. I tore it apart. The city, by the way, the building part was, department was terrific in that regard. But what do you see now, when you read this? Up here is a total lie. Total. No, the gentleman's still here. I think he is. It's a total lie. I live in, everything comes my way from west to east. I'm on the east end, and it is a cesspool of slime, and it's thick. I'm, I'm telling you, it's pathetic. I, I called this gentleman about two months ago, and I think I've probably talked to him. And I said, would you come to my house? You know, I'll give you a Coca-Cola, and you, you'll, you'll see the real thing off my dock. He never showed up. Oh, yeah, he said, I'll be there. I, I know right where you're at. He never showed up. He, I don't know what he's doing. I don't know if he's doing right or wrong. But I know one thing, he's not doing the right thing. He's ruined that lake. That lake is awful. The milfoil is way on the far end of where the drain is, it's gone. They kept everything under control. It was one of the things that that lake needed. For 16 years, it's been perfect. And this year, I came back 16, 17 years ago, and this year, it's a slime pit. It's embarrassing. I wouldn't even invite people over to my house. This lake comes under my house. So when the wind blows, it's blowing the slime, green, ugly slime, real quickly, it's blowing it under my house. You're going to believe this stuff? I don't know. I, I don't know what's the matter with people. Thank you for your time.
All right, Gary. Mr. Smith, I'll get over there. We'll get over there. We'll see you probably next week. I'll get over there, we'll take a look. I will.
I'll be there.
All right. Good. We'll, we'll coordinate. We've got.
I'm going to be out of town on Sunday, so is that not next week?
We'll, we'll coordinate. We'll, we'll get over there. And Kevin and EJ, let's, let's get out there, take a look at it. That's about where we launched our vote, Mr. Smith. All right. Now Jerry, Jerry Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Farrell and city council members. I'm Jerry Knutson. I'm the, on the board of the Historical Society of Federal Way and have been for 20-plus years. And I just wanted to first thank the city for the memo of understanding that was passed at the last meeting, and I appreciate that, and all, all of us do at the Historical Society. And I just wanted, I have some invitations here. We sent these out a few weeks ago, but we're having our annual meeting, and it's going to be at the library this Saturday, starts at 12 o'clock. We have a business meeting, we have to collect our officers and board members, and so that'll be a short part of the meeting, and then we have some presentations. We're going to have some discussion of Brook Lake. We're going to have some discussion of, and we have a speaker. The subject is going to be lost roadhouses of Seattle, and it was published just this last year, but the authors of that are going to speak, because Brook Lake is one of the last standing roadhouses in the greater Seattle area. And it's, and it's mentioned in the book, and so it's a chance for people to, to come and hear a little bit about that. So I'd invite everybody, it's going to be at the King County Library. If anybody wants an invitation, I'll just set them on the table over. Is that okay?
Of course.
And you don't have to be a member to attend the meeting, again, at the King County Library on 320th. Excuse me, on.
First.
First Avenue. First Avenue. So I just invite everybody to be there, and I, I still have a minute and a half left. I just thought, totally unrelated to the Historical Society, is the fact that, I mean, first of all, the Heritage Center is located right across from the entrance to Steel Lake Park. So if you have any, that's where all the history of Federal Way is located, at the Heritage Center. And again, that's a city facility, but we lease it for a dollar a year, and it's really a very important part of maintaining the history of Federal Way. I happened, I found the Steel Lake conversation very interesting, because I grew up on Steel Lake. Matter of fact, my parents moved there before I was born, so that's a long time ago. And we were on the northeast corner, 28th and 304th, and this past year, we had a family reunion. The house is a VRBO, and we had 40 family members that were there celebrating for a few days. And so I'm familiar with the lake way back when, and it was stocked way back in the 50s, because I have pictures of me catching 15 trout right in front of my house, laying on the ground, laying on the glass that I caught. So he, I saw on there, it was 200, 2006, it started stocking it, but that was 50 years before that was stocked. And we have old photographs of the boats. And anyway, I found that interesting, and I have fond memories of Steel Lake for 40, 40 years. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry. And thanks for your longtime service and for the word about Steel Lake. We'll get to the bottom of Steel Lake. We're going to, so to speak. We'll, we'll figure it out.
We'll get to the bottom.
That's where the problem is. Margaret Rayner.
Hello, Mayor and city council. I've talked to you many times, mostly about Steel Lake. And I'd really like to thank Kevin for his great report on Steel Lake. I'm sorry that Gary felt that Kevin lied about the information. What Kevin presented is all science. We have a company that comes, Aqua Techniques, techniques that comes every year and surveys the lake. And what Kevin presented was the survey of the weeds that they found around the lake, and that survey was done in June. When Gary was really, really upset about the lake, it was in August. And admittedly, the weeds had gotten way worse in August, and the algae bloom was really, really bad then. The lake is really in great health. It's really, really doing quite well. Weeds come, weeds go. Climate has changed. We've got way warmer summers now. The lake used to freeze over a long time ago. We used to ice skate on the lake. We could ice skate all around the lake. Maybe we might get a thin sheet of ice now, right close to the shore. The lake has really, really changed. The demographics around the lake has changed. We've got way more development. We have way more runoff. We have way more people. And so there's been a big change in the lake, but the lake, for the most part, is doing really, really well. And I'm sorry that this summer, the weed situation was bad. Last summer, we had extremely hot weather. This summer, it wasn't nearly as hot, but we didn't have the rain, we didn't have the turnover of the, the lake, the, from the cold and the rain. And so anyway, I would like to thank the city council for your concern about the lake, and I'd like to assure you that the lake is doing really, really well in the long term. And I realized when the mayor went out on the lake, that some of the rest of you might not have ever been out on Steel Lake. And so next spring, I think it would be a good idea if we had an event where we invited all of you to come out and see the lake. Take you up into what I call the lagoon. Take you around the different places of the lake. So thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, feel free to call me at any time.
Thank you, Margaret. And we will, we're going to take you up on that. That's going to be a lot of fun. We'll do that in the spring. Kevin does great work, and I, you know, we, we all understand the emotion, because this is where people live, and it's about, thank you so much for, for that, for that word. Appreciate it. And I spent an hour, at least, with Kevin on that boat and, and saw all the studies, and, and so, but we can understand, people, people love the lake, they love their home, and, and they're, they're in defense of it. So it's passion. So Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, council president, Coach Mark, council members. I'm Susan Strong, and I live in Federal Way. I was going to speak tonight on the topic of what is happening at the Dollar Tree store, but I changed my mind after driving to see what was happening at the Day Center, which is operated by Catholic Community Services. The flashing red lights caught my attention as I turned the corner near the Day Center. I couldn't believe my eyes. Two fire department aid cars, two federal police cars were parked in the driveway going into the Day Center. As I watched from across the street, one police vehicle and one aid car departed. You could tell they had other business. The Medic One vehicle was replaced by an incoming Trimed vehicle. The emergency personnel attended a gentleman seated on the sidewalk next to the Day Center. I am not a doctor, but this fellow looked like he may have been on drugs. He was conscious but barely able to sit up. While this was taking place, it was business as usual in the Day Center parking lot. Tents were set up along the edges of the lot. A camper car was parked along the street. People were milling around. The dumpster on the property of the Catholic Community Services was overflowing with garbage on the ground. Businesses and Federal Way residents are trying to everything they can think of. But the drug and addiction and homeless situation keeps growing. With all the money thrown at this problem, why is it getting worse day by day? Where are we headed? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And we're well aware of the Dollar Tree. We've sent, and just so you know, on PAC Highway, everybody, PAC Highway, and I think it's 308, we sent Special Operations Unit over to the Dollar Tree. And especially right there with the 7-Eleven and the little barber shop place. So they reached out to us. And we've got a Special Operations Unit making sure that we get people away from the entrance of there. And we're watching that very carefully. And not just watching it, but doing what we can. Anna Patrick. Then Melissa Hamilton, Katrina Dome, Jeffrey Tancredi, and Craig Patrick.
I just wanted to share with everyone here that this weekend, there is an event at Highline Community College that I think we should all try to attend. We've been, you've been hearing from a lot of us. There's a lot of great things that are happening in our community, as was demonstrated earlier. But you've been hearing from a lot of us about some of the challenges that we have. And one of the things that I've been pretty vocal about is the closing of the youth jail and the impact on our community. So there is an event. They are going to close the jail, whether we like it or not. They are calling for, well, they have a listening session for youth, young adults, and parents who have experienced harm. And they want to hear from those folks to come up with plans for how they can carry out the closing of the jail in our communities. So I would encourage anybody that cares about what's happening in our community regarding the violence and the impacts on the silent victims in our community, which we have. Saturday, October 7th, 12 to 3, Highline Community College. I did call the number on the flyer, and I can share that with you guys if you're interested. I called the number and asked for clarity on the harmed individuals that they're calling for voices from. And they did say, it's a right, they're gonna have everybody there. The people harmed from the system of the judicial system, the victims that are harmed, they're gonna bring them all together somehow and facilitate a listening sessions. And so I'm not sure how this is gonna go. But they really aren't hearing from a lot of the people that are victims. And so we need to be the voice here in the community. We know that there's things happening. And we need to speak out because they're kinda going with whoever's going to be the loudest voice at this point. So it's really important that we speak up. We may not get anywhere with it, but we've gotta try. And also, just wanna speak to the Nibers crime stats. I don't know if you've been, I know you guys have been getting the emails. And there are some very serious crimes that are being downgraded. You know, the referral slips are going to King County. We call it one thing, they send it back saying, nope, not gonna do that. Then we call it something else. And according to Nibers requirements, we're not supposed to change it. So King County then uses that data to justify what they're doing, such as closing the jails. So just wanna call for some accuracy in our crime stats. As far as Nibers, that gives us a full picture of who the victims are, what's happening. We need to have accurate data. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Melissa Hamilton. Then Katrina Dome.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Kochmar, council members and community. My name is Melissa Hamilton, and I'm a Federal Way resident. I wanna thank first the Diversity Commission for their suggestions at the last City Council meeting. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are concepts that unfortunately have been weaponized by DC politicians. But I believe when we uplift and include people who have been underserved and underrepresented, the outcome is good for the whole city. I too was shook by some of the comments at that June 20th meeting. Hopefully, these meetings can be a place in the future where all feel valued and included. Now, switching gears. Speaking of inclusion, one thing I have noticed after watching a couple dozen of these City Council meetings in these last two years is that crime has affected all of us. I spoke last time on the smash-and-grab burglary trend we are currently seeing, trying to bring solutions. Women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, shattered and destroyed by criminals that can't be pursued. This is truly an inclusive victimization. Now we have another trend to worry about. Coming to our city, criminals rear-ending our vehicles and then carjacking us at gunpoint when we step out to exchange information as required by law. In our current climate of nonaccountability, criminals are emboldened. While diversion, counseling, and drug treatment programs in an effort to reduce recidivism are fine goals, we also have to remember that where there is zero punishment, there is zero deterrence. And we are all experiencing now exponential harm under current pursuit legislation and non-existent prosecution. According to a 2016 report by the US Department of Justice, quote, "The certainty of being caught is a vastly more powerful deterrent than even the punishment itself." How can we communicate to would-be criminals a certainty of being caught when they know our police officers can't even legally pursue? If we can't punish and we can't pursue, the research shows that crime will be rampant. I looked up the legislative priorities set by our City Council this year, and I was encouraged to see that the number-one legislative priority for this council was restoring the reasonable suspicion standard for police pursuits. As the mayor pointed out two weeks ago, Federal Way residents have experienced a 79% increase in vehicle thefts since the current law was passed. The numbers speak for themselves when it comes to how the current legislation has affected our community. So I wanna thank our City Council for this effort. And hopefully, we can make our city safer and more prosperous for all in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrina, Katrina Dome, and then Jeffrey Tancredi.
You know, Melissa, I wonder if you write that up and send it to, an email to our legislators?
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Katrina Dome. And I'm here because several Federal Way residents have asked me to bring a topic back that I talked to you about last spring. A lighter topic and an out-of-season topic. I am here to again mention and update you on the idea of a modified fireworks ban. Something I've become very, very passionate about because of how the data shows that this modified ban decreases fireworks danger, decreases fireworks stress over noise, and allows families to still enjoy a celebration. And where my heart is the most, allows nonprofits to make money. Quick review, in a modified ban, we've tried the, everything's legal and then bans, everything's banned. And people have found none of them work. In a modified ban, ground-based fireworks are allowed. And what cities have found is it lets people go to the tribal land where they are often offered, or buy accidentally, the really big, the things that really stress us out. By allowing the ground-based ones, people stay in their community and shop. They support nonprofits. They have a nice neighborhood celebration. It doesn't get rid of everything. I'm not saying that. But it decreases it. And I wanted to give you an update. The city of Sea-Tac this summer, in spring, they passed a modified fireworks ban legislation and came on board and had a very successful Fourth of July season with no issues. And nonprofits made about $20,000. Tuck Willa is in its second year. And the folks in Tuck Willa, the leaders, are so positive about this. They have allowed me to share that if you have any questions. Mayor Allen Eckberg speaks out publicly. He says, have anybody call me? I will tell them about the difference this has made in our community. Police Chief Dreever said anybody can call him. And Councilmember Tom McLeod, who was the council president when they passed, they've all offered to talk with communities about what a difference it's made around this hot topic because it's a stressor for people. I get that. When Sea-Tac was debating this, Fire Marshal John Napier from the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority came and did a very positive presentation with data showing that these ground-based fireworks don't cause the danger. Nothing that goes boom is allowed. So the folks that are stressed by the booms, it's still a win for them. Those things, the aerials, the loud ones are still illegal. And he, oh, he showed. Darn it. So much I wanna say. Anyway, I have just become so passionate about this. I'm passionate about nonprofits. I am passionate about communities seeing peace around this fun time of year. And most places don't realize that there's an in-between option. And so I just wanted to put it before you again. As I said, several people have asked. I would love to work with you further. If you'd like to consider it, please reach out to the leaders of Tuck Willa. They would love to share their experience directly from folks because we all have the same goal. Increase peace, increase safety. And this is the one option that has data that shows that it gets closer to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeffrey Tancredi, and then Craig Patrick.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Honda, and Council President Kochmar, and Council. Good evening. Jeff Tancredi, Federal Way, Federal Way resident for 27 years. There are encampments along the fence line on the Day Center property. This Day Center has become a magnet for crime, such as theft, vandalism, break-ins, loitering, cart pushing, illegal drug activity, and drug use. How do I know this? Because I spent two days walking up and down PAC Highway from 336 to the Sherwin-Williams store, across the street, and then walked down the other way down to the Home Street Bank. I have talked with many business owners, managers, and employees up and down Pacific Highway South and along South 336 Street. Every one of these business owners slash managers say the same thing. They're tired of the homeless drug addicts stealing and destroying their property, urinating and defecating on their property. Just the other night at Ernie 76 Gas Station, the clerk in the store told me that the chemical latrine, port-a-potty, was set on fire and it was destroyed. Just name a few businesses. Cafe Noir, Napa, O'Reilly Auto Parts, mom-and-pop stores, and the list is just too long to name, who are all victims of crime. The Day Center is not sustainable. There is no short or long-term goal to get these drug addicts off of the street and into a treatment facility. The only beneficiaries of this Day Center are the employees who make around six-figure salaries. The King County Regional Housing Authority is a nonprofit. Is paying these employees huge salaries, but there's no benefit. There is no benefit to our citizens and to our businesses. Please consider whether this facility does anything to make our city safer or cleaner. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Patrick.
All right, thank you. Thank you. My name's Craig Patrick. I'm a resident of Federal Way. I'm here to talk about the West Hyvolos Restoration Project. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, council members. I'd first like to thank Ken Blevins for bringing us this opportunity. Ken introduced me to Brian Davis, who's a property manager over at Treve Properties. Brian and I talked about cleaning up the Hyvolos areas in the back. I talked about this two weeks at a City Council meeting. Most of all, I would like to thank the community members that showed up. I wanna thank you all for showing up. We had about 30 people show up. They were determined. They were motivated. They were dedicated to getting this place cleaned up. If it wasn't for these 30 community members, it would've taken months to clean this property up. We had a dumpster the size of a freight train car. And Naveo sponsored the cleanup by providing the dumpster. They provided the forklifts. And they provided two employees to move the garbage that we were putting into dumpster, or into the cargo, into the dumpster. On the east side of Treve, I wanna thank Deputy Mayor Honda for coming out. I wanna thank Councilmember Paul McDaniels for coming out, Council President Kochmeyer for risking her life and limb. Same with Councilmember Honda for risking her life and limb to doing some cleanup. The east side of the property is basically the city of Federal Way. That's where we got the majority of the refuge, was coming from that area. We also did the south side of the Treve property. Where it is property, it is private property over there. Mainly, the city property runs down the south side, north-south side on the east side of Treve. So your west Hyvolos is the city's property. We cleaned up the majority that came from that area, the south. And what needs to happen, I think, is a fence needs to be put up around the Hyvolos because there's an input and output. People can come and go in there. And we did come across a few campers in there. People, there's council members that are aware of that. Other individuals are aware that there are people camping back there. We tried an approach to get them to clean up the camp where they were camping. They helped us out. But they are on this property. And, you know, talking or hearing the Steel Lake people, we know that this area, this west Hyvolos area, it's a water duct. It collects water. That water runs off into different streams and aqueducts. And so it does funnel into the lakes and streams. So there's a lot of variables going on. But if we have a clean city, it's gonna be a safe city. If we have a clean Hyvolos area, it's only gonna facilitate cleaner water. So I wanna thank the community members. I wanna thank the City Council for working with us on this. I wanna thank Treve for sponsoring us on this. And the entire, the entire property really does need to be secured. And we don't think that it is really being secured, the west Hyvolos. So thanks again. And thank you for the community members that showed up. We couldn't have done it without you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg. Stephanie, we had somebody online?
No, Mayor, I don't have anybody. No.
Oh, I thought we had a public comment online. Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you very much for letting us know your thoughts. It's the most important thing we do every week, every meeting. All right, presentations. Item A, Proclamation, National Hispanic Heritage Month. Councilmember Walsh.
Es mi placer leer y presentar esta proclamación sobre las contribuciones de la gente latina. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic and Latino communities and highlights its countless achievements, and whereas Hispanic Americans represent a significant and fast-growing demographic of the city of Federal Way, and whereas the Hispanic Heritage Observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week commemoration, first introduced by Congressman George G. Brown in June 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Observance was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period, starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. And whereas this month's theme, Unidos: Inclusivity for a Stronger Nation, is from Ms. Illy Suarez. Ms. Suarez reminds us, having diverse voices in decision-making will produce more thoughtful decisions, which leads to more positive impacts from our communities of color and everyone as a whole. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month acknowledges and appreciates the deep history, rich heritage, and invaluable contributions made by the ancestors of community members who came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, South and Central America. And whereas the Independence Anniversary for Latin American countries, El Salvador, Guatemala, Costa Rica, Nicaragua, and Honduras, is September 15, followed by the Independence Days of Mexico on September 16 and Chile on September 18. And whereas Hispanics have enhanced and added to our national character, with centuries-old traditions that reflect multi-ethnic and multicultural customs make our nation stronger and richer in culture. And now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and City Council of the city of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15 to 2023 as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and do encourage all community members of Federal Way to honor and celebrate Hispanic contributions and culture to our city's diversity. Signed this third day of October 2023 by the mayor and the City Council. And this was to be presented to, and will be presented, is he online?
He is on the line.
All right, thank you. Miguel Maestas, Associate Director of El Centro de la Raza. Mr. Maestas, it is my privilege to present this proclamation to you. Is he able to make a comment?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
We can hear you.
Hi, Consejero Walsh, Mayor Farrell, honorable council members, thank you so much. I was on the way to the meeting and got a call that a family member came down with COVID, so that's why I'm joining on Zoom and appreciate the opportunity to do that. On behalf of our Executive Director Estela Ortega and our entire El Centro de la Raza family and community, we are so appreciative of this proclamation. So a profound mil gracias, many thanks for this wonderful gesture of solidarity to our Latino community, which includes Afro-Latino, Indigenous, and Mestizo and Asian people. And El Centro de la Raza, which we translate as the Center for People of All Races, continues to improve the skate rink facility. The El Centro Skate Rink is on a roll. We are investing in the infrastructure of the facility, like electrical, lighting, solar panels, audiovisual and new video games, making it more enjoyable experience for skaters. And happy to share that a national skaters showdown is coming back to Federal Way in August, bringing hundreds of visitors to town. And we continue to hire young people from the local community. And our plans for development of the adjacent property will expand services to children, youth, seniors, and families in need, particularly in Federal Way and South King County. And just to share, our Business Opportunity Center provides, continues to provide one-on-one business advising, entrepreneurship training to help people start and grow their small businesses, and provides digital skill training. And we are in the pre-development phase of our market or Mercado and Park that will expand economic opportunity. And finally, El Centro programs in Federal Way support children and youth and focus on social, emotional learning, re-engagement, and GED opportunities, and workforce development to inform youth of their opportunities to go to college and enter pre-apprenticeship programs in a variety of trades. So in closing, again, we express our sincere appreciation for this proclamation and look forward to our continued work together to serve the people of the City of Federal Way and King County in our work for equity justice and a dignified life for all people. Mil gracias, thank you all so much.
Gracias, Jose.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you for the work you do, Mr. Maestas. Okay, now, moving on to item seven, the Council Committee and Regional Committee reports. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
Yes, there are. We will be, our next Parks, Recreation, and Human Services and Public Safety Committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, October 10, right here at the chambers at 5 o'clock. That is our report.
Very good. Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Dobie.
Yeah, thank you, I'm here. We had our land use meeting last night, and we'll see many of the things that passed out of committee on the agenda next week. We do have a couple issues and things that will be coming up on our next council meeting, or next meeting, which I believe is November 6. I think I got that right. And we have some development agreements that will be coming up, talking about different properties that have come forward that want to do some different things, so we'll have those on the agenda. And we did have a presentation about community space, the T-33, which many people know as the Target Building. That's no longer there, thank goodness. It's flattened. And we discussed ideas about community space, city hall, location sometime in the near, not near future, but in the long-run future of Federal Way, if that was viable. Of course, we have to figure out if it's affordable. But there's been a lot of interesting discussions. And again, on November 6, there will be more discussions about long-term issues in Federal Way, having to do with land use zoning and some of the directions that we're taking. So we had a good meeting, and there'll be more to come. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Councilmember. The Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. Our committee met last Tuesday, September 27. All seven council members were there, so thank you for that. The agenda item from A, 8A through 8I on tonight's consent agenda was approved and forwarded by committee for your consideration and approval. We also have an in-depth discussion on item 9A, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Project for Economic Development, and also item 9B, which is the Interfund Loan for the Community Development Block Grant. And the committee approved and forwarded those two items for your consideration and approval tonight under the Council Business. Our next meeting will be on October 24 at 5:00 PM in this room. With that, I end my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Asaph Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Although we don't have any tourism grant applications that have been received, we would like to convene the LTA meeting next week so we can share three things. As you all know, we had missed meetings for the last couple of months. We'd like to share a warm farewell to Kathy, who was the administrative assistant for LTAC, as she passes the baton to Julie, now who's going to be staffing this committee. We'd also like to share a post-event presentation to the group from the owner of Pacific Raceways, since they're so grateful for their support in the event. That was a huge success. And this is a high grant that we offered to the Pacific Raceways, and there were questions and discussions on the dais about it. And some of the highlights are that the mayor was interviewed on national TV. Federal Way had signage that was seen by almost 1 million viewers. Federal Way hosted a drag and drive caravan rally the Thursday before the races at the PAC. And then Federal Way continues to have many hotels highlighted on the Pacific Raceways website. And so the total marketing value of the grant for Federal Way was approximately $20,000, I mean $200,000. We'd also like to share post-event presentation from Elite Productions, who hosted an annual bodybuilding event at the PAC that also attracted a large regional contingent of competitors and has become a regular event in Federal Way. With that, our next meeting is next Wednesday, the 11th, at 10:00 AM. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor, report.
Thank you. I'd like to start with a message from the Senior Commission. They would like to announce that SHIBA, S-H-I-B-A, statewide health insurance benefits advisors are able to talk to you about your Medicare options. They're available by appointment on the second Thursday of each month. And there's a phone number to call if you're interested. I can give that to you. Also, on the third Wednesday of every month, the Commission has started having what is called Senior Commission Connections. It's from 10 to 1, and it's at the Federal Way Community Center in the Senior Lounge. And we did the first one in September. We had 65 people there. The next one is coming up on October 18. The guest speaker will be Aaron Parker, and he will be talking about Medicaid. And so we invite you to come. Snacks and coffee are provided. The commissioners will be there. And it really was, the first event was really fun. We had a lot of people there, so I would encourage you to come. If any other commissions want something announced from the dais, please let me know. I work closely with the Senior Commission, and so I know what they're doing. But if other commissions would like us to announce things, just please let us know so that we can do that and support the commissions. In the last two weeks, I've attended the Regional Transit Committee, the Board of Health meeting, the Walmart ground opening, the retirement event for Robin Corrick, the CEO of MSC. She is retiring after, what did she say, 20 years at MSC? And just amazing, she's done, MSC has changed so much under her leadership. And before that, it was Councilmember Dini DuKlo, who ran the Multi-Service Center. So thank you, Robin, and enjoy your retirement. I attended the September Internet Technology and Communications Committee meeting, which is a National League of Cities meeting, and that was really interesting. We spent a lot of time talking about the potential shutdown of the government and what that would mean to many programs that cities are involved in. The Association of Washington Cities Education and Training Advisory Committee was just the other day, and we were talking about the upcoming conference in June. Seems like so far away, but need to plan for it now. So if any councils have ideas for what they want to see there, it's going to be in Vancouver this year, let me know, and I can pass those along, because now is the time to plan for that. And just been pretty busy, and so anyway. Council, there were two, there was a very important email that she got today from Sarah in Bridgeford, and she needs a reply by tomorrow night. So if you could look at your emails and please reply. There are two really important things, so if you could please just reply to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Council President, Coach Meyer.
Thank you. As you know, the garbage folks are picking up food donations this week. But if you don't want to donate food, you've forgotten to bring your food. If you go Friday, I mean Saturday, to Fred Meyer between 10 and 2, you don't even have to go in and buy anything, you can just leave some cash. Because, or check, because what they do with the money at Multi-Service Center with the holidays coming up, they can double and triple with their buying power. And so that can make quite a big impact in, for Thanksgiving and Christmas, for some of our folks. Couple of ideas I've got that I want to work on. I've already asked our mayor if we couldn't start having our town hall meetings again, our listening sessions, maybe after the first of the year. Those were very valuable. We did those in the school districts, and I think that would be a good thing. When we had our collaborative meetings with the school board and then had a coffee with the school board and the council, a lot of people were very complimentary and very happy to be able to come talk and ask questions. And I think that those community meetings, listening sessions are really important to our community, to bring our community together and to try to solve some of the problems we're dealing with. And I have one other program I'd like to start, and I've asked Councilmember Dobie to put that on his Land Use Committee agenda for, in January, February. And I talked with Judge Larson about this last night. And you may not know, maybe you know, Mayor, we have $20 million in fines, fees that have never been paid. Now, these are fines that are not just from when people have been arrested and they couldn't pay their fine, it's also traffic fines. It's also, but it's money that it will grow as a problem for the folks who own the fine and can't pay it. And so if we have some kind of a program where we have a litter pickup program where you can, and Judge Larson has talked about this before, where you take the folks who have the fines and you give a sign it a number, like $15 an hour, there's no money taking place because they're working off their fines. And we have them do trash pickup. It could be trash pickup in the parking lots at the businesses, but where it's safe. And then hire one of them as a supervisor to oversee the litter pickup to solve the problem we have of trash along the roadways, trash in the parking lots of our businesses, to make our community a place that we're proud to call our home. That's what I think is really important, and we can do that with no money changing hands. It's going to take some work, but at least we can talk about it. So that's something, one of the programs I'd like to get started in the future. Well, thank you, I agree. I think those are the people that are involved in the litter pickup out there. Yeah, right? Okay.
Very good. I talked to EJ about this, and it's a program that we've talked before. So we'll work on that, all right? All right, well, thank you. Now let's move on to the Consent Agenda. These items have gone through committee. I think Councilmember Tran talked about that. I'll go ahead and read all of them, and I'll ask if a council member wants an item pulled for separate consideration. Item 8A, minutes for the September 19, 2023, regular and special meeting minutes. B, monthly financial report, July 2023. C, monthly financial report, August 2023. D, AP vouchers, 71523 through 81623. Payroll vouchers, 7123 to 73123. E, AP vouchers, 81523 through 91523. And payroll vouchers, 8123 through 83123. F, replacement of vandalized VMS sign. G, purchase of replacement copiers. H, purchase of replacement computers. I, reclassification of Parks Maintenance Worker 1. Counselor, are there any items you want pulled for separate consideration? All right, Council President, Coach Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the Consent Agenda items A through I.
Second.
Spin a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That'll pass unanimously. Now, moving on to nine, Council Business, item A, the American Rescue Plan Grant Projects for Economic Development. We'll have a staff report from our Economic Development Director, Tanya Carter.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, and Councilmembers. I am Tanya Carter, your Economic Development Director, here to chat about ARPA and economic development projects. So we've put together a brief presentation that is in your packet this evening just to summarize the background, where we're at, and have a discussion this evening about the programs. So the policy question this evening before council is, should council approve use of previously designated economic development ARPA funds for 14 business resiliency projects? And as mentioned, this is in your packet. So a little bit of background for the public and anyone who wasn't here on the previous discussions. City Council allocated $750,000 in ARPA funds to support economic development projects in the 2324 biennial budget. And the projects that economic development is proposing include business growth and retention strategies, attraction, tourism, and workforce development projects. And these items were presented at council on the 5th of September, also at the FedRAC, apologies for the misspelling of FedRAC there, on 9/26, and also this evening at council, which is October 3. So just a high-level summary for business retention and expansion, as well as attraction, we have programs totaling 146,000. We have business attraction totaling almost 100,000. We also have workforce development, marketing, and citywide projects that would total respectively 100, 205 roughly, and roughly 95,000. So the decision this evening for council would be option one, to approve the above allocations and projects. Option two, which would be to not approve the above allocations and provide staff direction, and the mayor's recommendation is option one.
Can I ask a question about the process tonight? Are we going to discuss all of these before we start voting on any of them so that we know where, if people have any questions on any of them?
So I'll defer to our city attorney, but the way that we discussed it was that we, there's either a choice for voting on everything and to just pass.
Well, I think we should pull, every item should be voted on separately.
Well, that's not the way it's calendared. So, okay. One way that you could do this is to make a motion with respect to each, I mean, I guess, did you want to make modifications? Let me just ask for, just for purposes of clarity.
They're listed.
They are. All right, let's just go through it. Let's do it one by one. Is everybody okay with that? Or actually, Councilmember Dobie and then Councilmember Walsh?
I was just going to say, I thought there was a third option, what we're talking about. You can go down the list one by one and.
Just pull what you want to talk about. That way we can vote for the rest.
Yeah, let's just pull what we want to, I mean, it's all been discussed extensively in committee.
Let's go, okay.
And so.
Council, actually, first of all, did you guys have any questions for the presenter, for Tanya?
I just, I have one procedural question.
You bet.
We can go through each one of these 14, and it's, you know, we're probably going to find that 11 of them or 10 of them, we all say, hey, it's no problem. Let's just pass them through. So I would rather say, take the approach of what ones do council members have issues with, and then we pull those aside and then vote the whole.
Just like we do with the Consent Agenda.
Yeah.
That's a great, actually, Tanya and I have talked about this extensively. I agree, I actually, I think I've said this about five or six times in talking with her. Councilmember.
McDaniel.
McDaniel.
Yeah, we'll get it one day. Yeah.
Councilmember McDaniel.
My general comment, a question actually, and this is something we kind of talked about yesterday, but I'm going to rephrase something I asked you yesterday. And one of the things I commented on when we talked is about trying to find out, like, what are we considered to be success or a metric? And I'm going to rephrase that, and I'm going to ask you, for the Economic Development Department, what does success look like to you for them? What, for your department, what does success look like for you?
For all the programs in general?
Not the programs, just the department itself, because then based off of that, I can kind of get an understanding what we're looking at doing with these.
Got it, okay. So overall, economic development's goal is to increase the well-being of the business community in the city. And so what that technically looks like is, I mean, if you want to get like really down to the brass tacks, it's, you know, figuring out ways to increase sales tax, which would be through business retention and expansion, business attraction, and also creating jobs, again, through business retention, expansion, and also creating workforce opportunities. There's, you know, kind of additional, let's say, buckets, if you will, on tourism, which is, you know, figuring out how to create a place that's attractive for tourists to visit. So those are the metrics that we would generally go by in the industry.
Close enough for what I was looking for, thank you. But close enough for what I was looking for. Thank you.
All right. Actually, Councilmember Doby makes an excellent suggestion. I think that we're going to provide, so just like we do with the, what I just did with the consent agenda, out of items one through 14 that are listed.
They're right there.
Right, that are listed right there. One through 14. Can council please identify, are there items that you want to debate or are necessarily not in agreement with? We could pull those off. The individuals that are not pulled off, we can, well, I'll ask the council president for a motion for those items that have received. So, council, any items that you want pulled off this list for separate consideration?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor.
Under workforce development.
Number, the number, please.
That would be number 14.
Okay.
And then number four.
Okay.
And five, because on this they're together.
Four, five, 14 have been pulled off for separate consideration. Councilmember Sephed Dawson?
13, I just have a question, I think.
Okay, so question, council, any other items to be pulled off? Councilmember McDaniel. Oh, actually, Councilmember Sephed Dawson?
Yeah, I have, it's just, I can ask the general question like he just did, and maybe that would answer my question, so. Should I do that?
Go ahead, let's do it.
Oh, just pull them, so. So my questions are on two and three, and seven and eight. No, no, six and seven.
Are they quick questions or are they? Go ahead and ask them, please.
So with two and three, that talks about grant writing workshop, wait. One is grant writer, right?
Or services, yeah. Grant writer and grant writing services.
And the second one is grant writing workshops, and then the third one is fundraising workshops. Those, could it be the same person providing those services? And do we need to pull them out the way we did here? And would it be more cost-effective if they were merged?
It wouldn't necessarily be more cost-effective, but the fundraising would be separate because fundraising is a different kind of practice area than grant writing. So fundraising altogether would be a separate workshop with a separate person. But, you know, theoretically, absolutely, the grant writing workshop could be conducted by whoever is doing the grant writing services. It's, you know, it hasn't been determined yet, but that is something that could be possible. But it also is a question of bandwidth and, you know, how the time allocation is. So there is definitely a budget in here to make sure that if that is not possible time-wise or resource-wise, that we would have a way to conduct those over the next two and a half years.
Okay, and then same with seven and eight, economic website rebuild and then website audit project. Those projects, could they be combined, do the audit and then do the rest?
So.
Six and seven, yeah.
It's two different functions, and so being combined, it's two different things. So first is like to see, you know, to basically do best practices, like SWOT analysis, a gap analysis, like how do our websites compare to the region? How do our websites compare to best practices for those type of websites? And just to be clear, this is not the City of Federal Way website. These are separate ones that economic development has owned and managed in the past. And then the second part would be to rebuild those websites. So irrespective, it's still, the cost wouldn't necessarily be any different. Or I guess maybe I don't understand what the, what the question really is. Is it about a cost thing or is it about a?
Well, I feel like you can do the audit and then move on, you know, continue, rather than do the audit and then have to go out. I feel like it could be a waste of time and money.
Do you want to pull that item for separate consideration?
I'm pulling it no matter what.
Oh, you're going to pull it? Okay. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sephed Dawson, are you done?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember McDaniel?
Uh, pulling seven and eight.
Seven and eight have been pulled. Okay, so far, we have four, five, seven, eight, 13, 14 have been pulled for separate consideration.
She's just pulling, are you pulling out four and five or just seven and eight?
Susan, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor pulled out four, five, and 14.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think 13 was just a question from Councilmember Sephed Dawson. I don't know that it was to be pulled.
13.
Councilmember Sephed Dawson, do you want that to be separately discussed and voted on?
Not for the, I have a question about that one too, so maybe yes. Let's go ahead.
It's pulled. Okay, council, any other, any other items pulled? Right now, the items are not pulled. One through three, item six, nine through 12. And again, they're all listed there. So, Council President Kuchmar, do you have a motion with respect to one through three, item six, nine through 12?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I do have a question on number three.
Okay, so we'll pull that for separate consideration.
Are you pulling?
Or you want a just quick question? Okay, go ahead.
Quick question. So on number three, in my opinion, the fundraising workshop, meaning that we get into the nonprofit agency.
Any businesses, nonprofit or?
Well, for the profit businesses, usually, we will help them with, you know, how to develop their business plan, how to finance their business plan. But we don't usually use the word fundraising. But you said that it could be included for the profit businesses as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's not limited, so we're not, we wouldn't limit it and say you can't attend this workshop if you are a for-profit business. But you are correct that it tends, fundraising, donations, things like that, tend to run more in the nonprofit sector, but it wouldn't be something where we would say you couldn't attend if.
Okay, if we can include those for-profit businesses, then I can support it.
Yep.
All right. Council President Kuchmar?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I move to approve the ARPA grant projects as follows. Number one, two, three, six, nine, 10, 11, 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second for the items listed by the council president. Is there a discussion?
Oh, I seconded it.
Very good. There's been a motion and a second. Thanks, Jack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those items are completed. Item four, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, my turn. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So item four is the top 100 people place things and marketing. Okay, so we'll just do the top 100 people places thing. So I don't have a problem with this, but what I'm looking for is where on your list we could pull some funding out for the broken window program and even helping businesses purchase security cameras? Because I know you've said that there's money left over, but you've never given us an amount of money left over. And I really don't think $200,000 is going to cover this. So if that was your amount, because I kind of heard that at one point.
So I would be grateful if it would be possible to kind of separate that out just because it is something that we are working on. But we, it was discussed at FedRAC a couple of days ago, and so we haven't had the time to finalize something to put forth to council. But to be clear at a high level, what we've investigated is essentially the way that the broken window funds work in other cities is that if a window gets broken, the window gets replaced. And there's like a lump sum of, you know, some kind of amount of money anywhere between. And these are averages just from talking to a few cities. So this is, you know, anecdotal based on what's happening in other cities. So between $500 and $2,000 per storefront. And so what the thought behind what economic development would do is to not just replace a broken window with another window to be broken again, but to offer that, you know, kind of similar sum of money based on three different options. And so the research that we've done is in three different options with a couple of different companies that offer what's called a Mylar coating. And the Mylar coating would go on the back of the, you know, on the inside of the storefront window that would prevent shattering of the glass, you know, wouldn't prevent breaking the glass, but it would prevent it from shattering into the business. The second option would be a frame and a glass that can be placed over the existing structure. So it would be a little bit more expensive than the Mylar option, but it would be something that would be much more sturdy, that could be put on preventatively, you know, to prevent if there's been issues in the past. The third option would be a complete replacement of the window and the glass for a shatter-proof glass. And so the Mylar option, all of these options are slightly more to, you know, definitely more expensive than an actual broken window. But if you look at the areas that are being, you know, affected, to replace a window multiple times is going to cost just about the same. And there's also the other added issue of insurance companies not insuring those broken windows anymore if it's just glass being broken.
Ms. Carter, can you, what's the general range? Number one, what is the leftover from ARPA? Is it the 200,000?
It is 200,000, and if we were to just take $1,500 per storefront as a kind of an average amount that we would assign, then, I can't quite do the exact math, but if it was like 100 stores, 100 storefronts, you know, $1,500, that would be about $150,000, I believe. So, you know, that would, I think, be significant, that would be enough to cover what we would have in issues here.
I'm not sure how this relates to four, but, because four is only 20,000.
Well, so on this list that we have been working off, four and five are one. So that, four and five on here were $205,000. So that's why I pulled them, because they're listed together as one amount of money.
So a point of clarification, we're talking about four and five combined, because I'm looking at 20,000 and going.
Right.
Right.
Where are you going to find any money in 20,000?
That's why I pulled four and five.
Okay, but I thought we were just talking about four specifically. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, yeah, exactly.
So, and that, to me, that was the one place on here where I thought we could pull money from easily.
So just to clarify, there is, this totals, this is an estimate, and it totals approximately $715,000. So there is some extra money above and beyond that, you know, $750,000 was the total allocated. There is also the grant writing services. Those are term limited. And so essentially, that was, council allocated $300,000 to grant writing services, but because it's term limited and the money has to be used, the performance period and the obligation period is through 2024. There still is that extra 200,000 there that we could pull over to a program like the Broken Window Fund, for example.
Councilmember McDaniel, do you have a follow-up?
My question, since we got sucked into the window concept, was, is if we move forward with this program, is it going to be retroactive to the people who've had windows broken or only future, future window breaks?
Future, so at the time that the program's implemented.
But we could go, we could go back, if anybody would.
We should go back.
I mean, we certainly can consider that. I don't know how we would just, I mean, I think that's, this is an offline discussion. I would suggest the mechanics of the programs. My suggestion would be at this, at this juncture, maybe that we just focus more on the policy of, you know, if the policy is that, you know, council wants to move forward with some kind of safety considerations for businesses, then there's a handful of programs that we can look at to see what kind of safety considerations for businesses may be possible. And I'll kind of refer back to a few conversations I've had with Chief Huang. We've also discussed some type of mobile, I'm going to get the name wrong, the mobile lighting units that are in malls. We've also discussed some other types of equipment. So there are other discussions, if the actual policy direction would be to, you know, provide more safety and lighting options for businesses.
I think without getting into all the minutia, I think what Deputy Mayor is trying to say under number five, there's 185,000 in there. Is there some of that money that could be pulled out to be put into along with the other things, for the Broken Window Program and other things for?
Well, actually, what I would also say, thank you, is that you're saying that this is, these are all estimated costs, which mean they could be higher than what, or lower, but they could be higher. And I want to make sure that there's enough money in a broken window and security for businesses program that we don't lose touch of that, so.
Yes, that is, that will not be a problem.
Well, if we spend it all, it would be a problem if we don't have the money to put into it.
We shouldn't have an issue with spending all the money. So that was kind of why we have that much buffer in there, because we have taken the estimates. And, I mean, if it's plus or minus, it would be maybe 5%, maybe, you know, maybe 7% per program.
Could placemaking, number five, go down to 100,000?
Probably not 100,000. With placemaking, I apologize because I probably should have used the term marketing originally, but the city has never embarked on any kind of an organized marketing effort that would provide something over a longer period of time for, you know, for this type of activity. And so at a certain point, we kind of have to start with a strategy, with a baseline, with, you know, some goals, with some, an implementation plan, with a budget, and kind of with a roadmap. And so that's really what a lot of this is focused on, is trying to set up that framework so that we do have something as a baseline that we can move forward with in the future. And I think there was also a few questions from council members if part of this funding is also for the actual cost of the materials for implementation.
So I'm wondering if we could just remove number five and then talk about it to a later date. Keep that money in reserves, along with the other money that she's suggesting.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah, would you like to remove number five? I'm asking her, because she's.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we have enough funding. And I don't think $200,000 is enough for a city our size and with what we're seeing. And with the cost of repairing windows, I mean, it's not inexpensive.
Okay, then I make a motion to remove number five to be discussed at a later date.
As a point of order, we won't be making motions to remove things. Each of these items should be voted on or not. So if there's no motion to approve this item, then it just dies.
Oh, it dies.
It just dies. Okay. So if there's no motion to approve item five, it'll die. All right, item 14, Deputy Mayor, you brought up item 14.
Item four is in home childcare. My question was, I love the program. But my question was, when it was, when we were at FedRAC, was, could people who live in a rental situation, like an apartment, qualify to be in this program? And you were going to look into that, so I just.
I did look into it, and I wrote counsel back on the response. And they, there is a checklist when the cohort, sorry, when the class of entrepreneurs is brought, is commenced. And one of the items on the checklist is if they do have an apartment, that it will be inspected. That's part of the checklist that they have to go through before they're admitted. So in some cases, depending on the apartment, it could be a possibility, but it completely depends on the apartment. So the answer is maybe it depends on the apartment. So it's not a categorical yes or no, but the apartment may have the environment that is conducive to that.
As well as a home may have the environment.
Correct, yes.
So this would, just because it's an apartment, doesn't mean that it would automatically.
Be excluded, correct.
Because homes could be also excluded if they don't meet the criteria.
Yep.
Okay, fine, thank you. I like the program, so that's it.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Could you interrupt me?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I said I like the program. I don't want to take an off. I just wanted to make sure that, because when it was first presented to us, it wasn't presented where if you were in a rental situation, that you could qualify for this program. And I wanted to make sure that that would happen.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we've discussed item four, five, and 14, and I move approval of item four and item 14.
Is there a second for item four and 14?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on items four and 14? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, we've got items seven, items seven.
Mayor, I'm sorry, was there any opposed on that?
Thank you, sorry. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, Ryan. Okay, items seven and eight were pulled by Councilmember McDaniel, council members, as to those items.
So before I start on that one, I just want to get clarity on this. So if five's not brought up for a vote, it just falls off?
Yes.
Okay.
For failure of action.
Got you. So my consideration for seven and eight, I'm going to take them separately, is going to be the same kind of concept. Seven, this is actually the background I have, so I actually, you know, feel comfortable talking about this stuff. I don't believe we should be voting on the website until we get the audit back and see what the results are to make sure that the budget and the plan for that one actually ties with what the audits are going to be. Because I believe these audits are for the websites that are going to be upgraded. So I kind of find it to vote for both at the same time to be, you know, put in the cart before the horse. I'd rather have the audit get back, see what the recommendations are, then go after the website audit, not the website audit, but the website rebuild at that point in time. It makes more logical sense, and I've done a bunch of rebuilds. I want to ensure it's done correctly and not just what we have built up is blown up, and then there's no residuals benefit from what we had done in the past. So that was my consideration for seven, so I don't know if we have to stop there.
Yeah, let's stop there, council member. And Tanya, do you have a response to that or in regard to that strategy?
I guess maybe just, would, is the opposition to building a new website? And I guess maybe for clarification, I think what we're discussing is, should we do an audit and should we then rebuild the website? So it, we. audit, and should we then rebuild the website? So, we know that after an audit, a website, you know, generally is going to be rebuilt, so maybe the question would be, is that something that council would like to, or what Councilmember McDaniel would like to do, is, like to have an audit, and like to have a website rebuilt after it?
Right.
Instead of the order of events, because then we could proceed based on what happens.
He's saying, why don't we wait till, why don't we wait till, to get the results of the audit, before we approve the funding for the rebuild?
I approve, I, I agree with doing the rebuild. I want to wait to see what the audit is, to make sure that the budget and what the game plan is, is in alignment with the budget. Because right now, we're voting on the money part of it. And I want to wait on the money part, until we see what the audit response was, to make sure this was in line with what we want to see happen.
Okay.
Let me, let me kind of generally poll council, not poll, but inquire, doesn't, council, does anybody have any heartburn about waiting on that particular item, pursuant to Councilmember McDaniel's suggestions? Councilmember Walsh?
So you're saying, go ahead with, with item seven, but hold off on item eight, then?
No, I'm saying, I'm going to say the same thing, eight's another one. I'm saying, go with six, but hold off on seven, till we get results from six.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
So you're saying, hold off on seven?
Correct. That's what I'm talking, I'm only talking about seven right now.
All right, now what about eight?
Eight's a completely different beast. On that one right there, I am just in complete disagreement with even stepping into this scenario for the city of e-commerce. This is something that I do not think is something to be taken lightly. And there's some major changes coming at the end of the year, in this industry, that I think we should wait. And if it does become an option, it needs to wait till after the end of the year, when some of these major changes are coming. So, my consideration on that one is, that one actually is a poll and hold, not, not to wait for an audit until things change.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so can I do a recap?
I think, Tanya, Tanya, gee, I have something to say?
I, I just wanted to share a clarification, that the number eight is a digital literacy program, that at the end of the program, the kind of end result, or like the school project, if you will, is an actual live site. And so, really what it is, is about the fact that 80% of small businesses are not digitally literate. They don't know, you know, how to find a e-commerce site, they don't know how to manage it, they don't know how to, you know, even once you get it set up, they don't know how to market it, much less have the funding to market it. So what this program is really focused on is, instead of, you know, having a small business faced with, okay, I need to open up an online website, or an online e-commerce shop, which one do I choose? How much does it cost? I don't know how to set it up. I don't know how to take the pictures. I don't know how to sell. I don't know how to do whatever. It, this program is essentially providing all that, and then the end result is that there's a platform, that everybody learns one platform. They don't have to stay on that platform for the rest of their, you know, the rest of the life of the business, but it is one platform that they can learn how to do all that, and launch from that, or decide to stay on it. So it's kind of an added benefit of having a digital literacy program, to have an end result of an e-commerce site that is functional for the city.
We're going to hear from Councilmember Dovi, and then Councilmember McDaniel again. But are we, is there consensus that, going back just a brief step, that, is, is there anybody who wants to move seven forward, or is there consensus that you're okay allowing seven just to remain idle? Okay, hearing nothing on that, just to, if someone wants to make a motion later, let me know. Councilmember Dovi, then Councilmember McDaniel?
I'd like to comment on item eight, and I have a little different thought, maybe, than Councilmember McDaniel, but, you know, we heard in people asking to interview for the senior commission this, earlier today, and a comment was made, that many people are digitally challenged. I'm one of those, even though I run a digital company. I have people that I hire to do that stuff. But the way this was explained to me, which made a whole lot of sense, is that we're going to take people that are, are businesses, that are digitally challenged, and put them into a program, so they can actually work on, as a whole, like a co-op, of all sorts of different businesses, using the same format, they get trained the same, the city kind of sponsors it, and then they can become more digitally, what do you call it, adequate, to have a website, and they know how to do it. And originally, I said, this is something I don't want to really, I didn't like it, I didn't understand it. But when, if it's truly going to small businesses, in federal way, much like the literacy class we have going right now, for people who want to learn how to run their finances, they can come to this as a small business, learn how to do the website, learn how to do the pictures, get support from the city, and all of a sudden, we have maybe 50 or 60 small businesses that have a legitimate website, because we pooled them together and taught them. And that, that's why I support it, because it, it's not just a website, it's spread it out to how many businesses want to take advantage of it.
Okay, we're going to hear back from Councilmember McDaniel, and then we'll see if there's any appetite for a motion with respect to number eight.
Okay. First of all, it's a subdomain. And the second thing is, they're not websites, they're landing pages. So what you're doing is, you're designing a, a platform hosted wherever it is, and you build a page on that platform. It is not actually a website, per se, because there's no domain that the company owns that then points to that site. And when it comes to digital literacy, the most important thing is the website, and owning your website. The people and small businesses do not own what's being built on this thing. It is owned by the company who actually has the software. You have access to it until you don't pay for it, and your access stops. So what you do is, you actually build up that one platform for all the traffic volumes to go to it. But that traffic volume does not then siphon off, or then go over to the actual page that you own, or the house, or whatever property you want to look at that way. And the second thing on the digital literacy, it's going to help with understanding basic e-commerce, and some photo-taking, but it doesn't have anything to do with the analytics. It's not going to help with the Google My Business, it's the number one driver for website traffic for small businesses. It's not going to help with being able to, to be able to get your social platforms tied together. And social literacy, or the digital literacy, that also includes Google Suites. I talked to a gentleman today, who's teaching small businesses how to use Google Suites, because they don't even know how to use their Gmail account. They don't realize that Doc's tied in, and other things are tied in. So, while I understand what they're looking at doing, digital literacy program is, is not, in my mind, the proper terminology for it. It is more of an e-commerce solution built on a platform. It'd be more like a Shopify, or GoDaddy, where you're actually building out that platform and that site. And does it have some benefit for small businesses? Yes. But realistically, to pull that apart, and to move it onto your own personal site, and then to rebuild up whatever traffic volume you need to do for it, is walking backwards. And like I said, with the changes coming to Google's search engine in the next couple of months, e-commerce is completely being turned upside down. So, my mindset is, I, I agree with the digital literacy program. I do not believe this is a digital literacy program, from my definition, with my background. I look at it as more of an e-commerce solution that would benefit some small businesses, but overall, I, I would like to see a true digital literacy program, and I would support that. I do not see that, is what this is.
Thank you, council member. Is, would anybody want to make a motion, or not? The floor is open for any motion with respect to item eight.
I have a question.
Deputy Mayor?
So, considering what Councilmember McDaniel's talking about, perhaps, this particular item, it could wait a few months to see what the changes are that are coming.
Okay. So, you, actually, what you're saying is, just like item, was it five? No, no, the...
It's five and seven that have died, and so we're on eight.
Um, one of the, yeah, five was something that we were going to have, that we were going to hold back.
Correct.
Seven?
Hold on.
The ones that aren't moving, the ones that are not moving forward are five, seven, and we're discussing whether, what we're going to do with eight. And just letting it wait for another few months is no, why not? Just let it wait?
Right, seven, we're waiting for the audit.
Yeah, I agree with the digital literacy program, but I want to actually see a true digital literacy program.
Okay, so we, we just won't move it forward right now. We'll just leave it until we're ready.
Not, we're not trying to kill it, we're just trying to wait to see what the new changes are coming into research at Mar.
Can I just provide one, one point of clarification? Actually, two, two parts of the same clarification. The, the businesses that we're talking about are truly digitally, you know, challenged. And so what this is meant to be, is not to be their be all, end all. It's meant to be a learning platform that everybody can benefit from, meaning that there is e-commerce that can take place. The second part of it is, is that businesses now are moving to omnichannel digital storefronts, which means that statistically, businesses now have more than one storefront. For example, businesses will have an Etsy storefront, a Shopify storefront, and an Amazon, AWS, or Amazon sells storefront, meaning that they'll have multiple channels, because they have a better chance of getting different audiences. So it is true that, you know, they, that businesses could have another website, that they could actually build another website afterwards, but this is meant to be like a beginner platform, that they can learn from, in a controlled environment, and use it as a springboard.
Okay. Councilmember Dovi, then back to Councilmember McDaniel.
I just was going to ask for clarification. What of these 14 have we not passed?
That's, thank you very much. Right now, five has been not acted upon, seven has not been acted upon. Right now, the question is whether eight, 14 has, and after, after we figure out eight, then the only one left is 13. So that, they would think, Councilmember Seifedawson had a question about 13, or, so, we're going to resolve eight, and then move to 13. With regard to eight, Councilmember McDaniel?
I, I think I've made my point clear, in my opinion.
Um, what's the, council president, you were making?
Oh, that's fine. I, I don't want to make a motion, unless Councilmember Dovi does. I, I think we should just talk about it at a later date.
Well, maybe we could get, if 13 has a question, maybe we can get it answered, and move that one off, and get it approved.
Great. Okay, item 13, Councilmember Seifedawson.
Yeah, item 13 is about doing a study about what hotel brands to bring to TC3, TC3, correct?
Yeah, so, it's, so it would, it's basically, in a hotel absorption study, we'll do a couple of things. It will analyze the market to see, you know, what types of hotels are on the market, what types of hotels could be on the market. And then, it will also, once it determines that, it will determine what kind of a, a business case would look like for that type of a hotel. And then that is what a hotel owner-operator could use to, you know, determine whether it would be something that they would be interested in building. So it would be on TC3, and it would be kind of all the parts and pieces that a hotel owner-operator would need, in order to determine if they can make it happen.
It's a pretty, pretty critical phase right now, whether we're going to be able to move forward. If we want a hotel at TC3?
Yes.
This is, this is required.
It's time sensitive, yes.
Right, so can we do a, an RFP? That, that's the, yeah.
There's, I mean, there's not that many companies that do this on the market, and there is a company that the city did use two years ago, and so it would essentially be, you know, moving the kind of mini-study that they did two years ago, and updating it, in order to be able to execute it in time.
It's a study first, before we got into an RFP.
Which, yeah, which we did a couple of years ago.
Right.
So are we doing a repeat of that, or what exactly are we doing?
It's, it's like, kind of more on steroids. You know, the biggest industry that was hit during COVID was the hotel hospitality and tourism industry. So the numbers and the data is all from 2019, which is pretty much invalid at this point.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Dovi.
So, thank you. So on the hotel study that was done two years ago, it's invalid, the study's invalid at this point?
So I, perhaps that was a poor choice of words. During COVID, the whole, that industry, I mean, completely broke down, and is getting rebuilt again. And so anything that was used as a data point, and from 2019 data, it was done two years ago, but with data from 2019, and the beginning of 2020. And so, the data isn't really, there's no hotel that would take it as a, as a valuable document at this point.
It's dated.
Okay, so, what was the conclusion of that study? Was it, was there a conclusion? Or was, did it not?
It's, it's kind of a moot point, because the market has completely changed. And in federal way, you know, we have TC3, which wasn't existing, and so that wasn't in the conversation. And so that wasn't something that was factored into the hotel absorption study. And then also the sound transit and the progress there. There's so much progress that was made there, that it's, it's a completely different environment now. So, a lot of different factors that bode well for the possibility of hotel.
So this study will only study placing a hotel on a TC3 property, nowhere else in the city?
Correct.
Are there, do you know of any other hotels that are looking at coming to federal way at this point?
Uh, so, it's, there are hotel operators now, the industry's a little bit different, so it's not an actual, it would be like a hotel owner, and the owner would operate it, and then, you know, work with a flag, or work independently. So, there is some interest in federal way, but this is what any hotel owner-operator would need, in order to move forward. So it's kind of a critical piece, no matter who wants to do what in federal way.
I understand that. I'm just curious if there's anyone looking at federal way to put a possible hotel anywhere in the city at this point?
Holiday Inn was looking on Pac Highway, just shy of 348. That was something that was in the works around the time mid-pandemic. That's something I heard of. Can you think of, just to give you...
There has been interest from a few owner-operators to build a hotel in federal way. So that, we are having conversations with interested parties, but...
And then this study would need to know that information, to, in order to say if it's possible that, that a hotel on TC3 property would be something that would make money for them, and be possible?
The reverse, yeah. They would need, the interested parties would need this, in order to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, yeah, especially as we're, we're going to really hit the afterburners on the development agreement with council right now, about, we're going to step up that process, about getting the development agreement before you guys, so we can get it approved and move forward. This is a real key component of that. We're talking about that at management team this week. Councilmember Dovi?
I move adoption of item 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Councilmember McDaniel, did you have your light, your...
Oh, my, I did have one quick question on it, I was going to wait for the next point. Is this used as like an incentive, like we take it to them, and say, yes, this is what you want to look at, and then they say, okay, now we're one step closer, now we'll do our own little research? Is this like a, kind of like a sales material, that we would take to hotels, to...
I never thought of it that way. It's, I mean, it's more of like a viability study, or a feasibility study, and so it's something that, you know...
Do they come to us, or do we take it to them?
They would use to take to their bank, they would use to create a business plan, they would...
Tanya, did you, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did you hear what the council member said? He says, do we give it, do we go out to them and give it to them, or do they come to us? Can you?
Either or.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, either or. I mean, it just depends on the organic nature of the conversation. So in this specific case, when we do have several, you know, owner-operators that have expressed interest, then that would be something that we would provide to them.
So it's going to sit until someone asks us, but for these people, you already know, you're going to actually take it to them, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Seifedawson?
I was to vote.
Oh, okay, it was, there's been a motion, a second. I, I don't see any other lights up, I don't believe, for other discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item 13 passes unanimously. Seven, five, seven, and eight, we left on the table, correct?
Yes, and Mayor, I just want to recap that. Five, seven, and eight total up to 282,000 that are still left in the pot, then in the ARPA pot. So we are really only passing about $500,000 worth of items at this point in time.
And 282 added to the roughly two, leaves us nearly half a million dollars. So, okay, very good, okay. Council, any other questions? I feel like I'm the auctioneer. Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah, on, on five, seven, and eight, I just want to make a comment. It's, it sounds like there's a, not to, discussion not to move it forward, and leave it as a placeholder, which I've been okay with. But I would urge us not to think of that as money to go do windows, or bullards, or something different. We have to look at what the other ARPA money is. And I do appreciate Councilmember McDaniel's comment about, hey, the, the industry's changing in the websites. That alone, if it really is changing, and we're only a few months away, I would rather wait to make the investment, if there's some technology change, because I don't know, and he, he does know, because that's his industry. So I would defer to the expert to be able to advise us over the next short time. But, again, if we're going to, if we're not going to vote on these, and they're going to be placeholders, I would urge us not to make this the money grab, to do something else, because there's some idea that pops up in the next 30, 60 days. I think there was a lot of time put in to develop a plan for the economic development for federal way, and I'm okay with letting that stand, but I wouldn't be okay with saying, oh, let's take 200,000 and go put windows in businesses. So which ones are we going to pick? I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of policy there that we have to think about.
Right. Councilmember Walsh?
And I was just going to say, I fully support what, what Councilmember Dovi is saying right now. I think that we need to, to hold this for these purposes, just make sure that it's, we have all the ducks in a row, and not be using it as for other things at the moment.
Well, since we're talking about this, when would you like to see this again? These three items?
I would like to see it before the end of the year. I would like to see it before the end of the year. I mean, I, we're only, we only got 90 days left of the year. We got four meetings or five, you know, we should be able to act on this with more information, hopefully.
Very good. Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember...
I was just going to say, we should be able to look at how much money we need in a broken window security program and develop that program rather quickly. Other cities have done it. I don't know. I mean, we're a city of over 100,000. We're one of the biggest cities in, in King County. So I don't want to compare us to Des Moines or some other smaller city in what they've done. I want to compare us to cities our size and what they've done.
May I ask a clarification question?
Of course.
Would it be the council's pleasure that economic development takes points five, seven, eight, and then also, five, seven, eight, and also the, some type of a security program, flushes them out more and makes a more detailed presentation on them? So essentially refamp based on the feedback that was provided tonight and make a presentation, ideally, you know, in the next few weeks? Would that be the council's pleasure?
I mean, yeah. I don't, I mean, your websites are going to require an audit. So I mean, you're going to have to wait for the audit to come back. And I mean, I don't think, I think the only one that has questions is the Glass one. Everything else was just a matter of time. My big thing and my caveat to what they had mentioned is, I want a digital literacy program, and that's what I'm looking for, not any commerce solution with the actual literacy program. So my caveat is, if we're going to hold the money in place for it, that this term stays the same. And what fits that actually is what we're going to be voting on.
Okay. I think we got it. Thank you, Tanya. Great job. Appreciate all your help. Thank you, Council, for a great discussion.
Thank you, Tanya.
And thank you, staff, for making sure that we had all that lined up. That, Council, that went on very well, to have an orderly discussion. Item B, resolution interfund loan for community development block grant. Staff report from Sarah Bridgford, our community services manager. Sarah?
Good evening. I, I will be presenting the resolution for the interfund loan for the community development block grant program, or fund. The policy question before you is, should city council approve the proposed resolution authorizing an interfund loan of up to $400,000 for three years to fund the difference between timing of grant reimbursement and spending of grant funds for the community development block grant program? So CDBG is a program of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It has three national objectives. The city's program has funded projects that fall exclusively in that low and moderate income person's benefit. So that's our national objective number one. And that's just to give some background. The four goals within our program are affordable housing, addressing homelessness, economic development, and then what's called suitable living environment, which allows for a variety of other services within, in the program. The interfund loan may, only be authorized for three years and then has to be renewed. So this is a renewal to allow the continued expenditure funds. CDBG is on a reimbursement basis, so there's a timing issue there. Additionally, our allocation is tied to the congressional budget. Our program here starts on January 1 and follows the calendar year with the congressional budget frequently not being approved at that time. We often don't have access to our funds until the summer. It's been as late as November, but more typically about August. So that creates just a timing issue and, and cash flow. We moderate some projects and don't start them until later, that there are a number of things that we would incur costs earlier. And with that, I invite Steve Groom to just address the interfund loan and the finance side.
Absolutely. With the, and I don't want to repeat, but clearly this is a cash flow mechanism. CDBG is a reimbursement program. So the obvious problem is that they need money to spend so that they can get reimbursed. Technically, we, we do repay the interfund loan every three years, but this is, for all intents and purposes, a perpetual arrangement, which is why it's renewed every three years. In the world of loans, there's two things that are important generally. Where is the money coming from and is it collectible? And this is a federal program, so it's 100% collectible. Finance supports the resolution, and we have the accounting in place to continue doing what we've always been doing. That's what I have to add.
Council, any questions? Steve Groom or Sarah?
I have one quick.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Steve, did you get a chance to call and talk to him to give me some education on that intertransfer stuff?
I did, I did. And I told him I'd be happy to teach the class next time. He can see that there are cases where interfund loans do make sense.
Okay. Just send me some transfers, an email with that information then.
Right. Deputy Mayor?
I would, in response to what Councilmember McDaniel just said, when we attended that workshop a year ago, I came back with the same questions because they, they spent so much time talking about interfund loans and why you don't want to use them. And so...
Absolutely. AWS puts on fine trainings, and in most cases, interfund loans are a red flag to fund operations. Right.
So thank you very much.
Certainly. All right. Councilmember Tran?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the proposed resolution.
Second?
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Sarah, great job. Thank you. Steve, great job. Okay, item C, senior commission appointments. Deputy Mayor Honda?
All right, getting down to the end of the meeting. I move the appointment of Frank Fields, Ken Pratt, and David Reynolds to voting positions with terms to expire August 31, 2026, and the appointment of Gwendolyn Coats Phillips to an alternate position with a term to expire August 31, 2026 to the senior commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Frank, Kenneth, Gwendolyn, and David. All right, item D, youth commission appointment. Councilmember Walsh?
I move the appointment of Malia Tasman to a voting position with a, with a, with a term to expire August 31, 2025.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Malia. Item E, human services commission appointment. Councilmember Walsh?
I move appointment of Gordon Bach to a voting position with a term to expire January 31, 2024, and the appointment of Sanu Tushabi to an alternate position with a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations to Gordon and Sanu. Council reports, we will start in position number one, because it's the first meeting of the, of the month. Councilmember Sephardos?
Thank you, Mayor, and I have nothing to report on. Thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, I'm actually going to talk up on Saturday. On Saturday, I went out with a local group of people to help do a cleanup. And in that cleanup, we did find a gentleman who was undetectable to other services recently. And I had a conversation with that gentleman, and the only reason I had the conversation because the gentleman was actually sober. Not a drug issue, but had other issues going on. And I told him that I'd make a deal with him that if he cleaned up his mess, that I'd fight for him with the city. I told him about on Tuesday. I came by today and he had half his stuff cleaned up. So I told him he has till Thursday, and if he hasn't done by Thursday, I will fight for that gentleman and see what the city will do. He's Brooklyn's peers. He's stuck with not being able to get into housing. He's got some food stamps. He's got medical. But if he's willing to fight and make the effort to change, then I'm going to push the city to do what we can for the guy. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing that. Okay, Councilmember Tran?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
No report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dovie?
I just have one comment. A citizen came up to me just recently and talked about Panther Lake, the walking path. And they suggested that maybe we needed one more dog station where there was bags for people to pick up after their animals. So I'm making that statement for the individual, so our parks director can make note of that. And if we need it, maybe it's something we, low-cost thing that might make it cleaner.
Do you have, and thank you, Jason, for being here tonight. So is there a particular location?
You know, I don't know. It's just a comment that, I guess there's bags at two places on the loop. Maybe a better place to have a third one.
Very good.
Because some people maybe are lazy and not picking up after their animals. They get in the, where there's no place.
Very good. Okay.
So just an observation. I'm not the expert, but I know we have them there. Thank you.
Jason, let's talk about that tomorrow. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I just want to talk about the Historical Society, their annual meeting. Once again, Saturday, 12 to 3 at the Federal Way Library on First Avenue. The speaker is going to be Peter Bledchow, who's talking about the lost roadhouses in Seattle, which includes Brook Lake. Come and support the Historical Society and become a member. Its membership is really inexpensive, and it supports our city. It supports the Historical Society and the work that they're doing, and it's, they're saving our history. So it's just really important. I would encourage you to attend and to become a member. And there will be a shredding of documents, old documents, on October 21, which is a Saturday, 9 to 1, at the BECU Federal Way Pavilion's Neighborhood Financial Center, which is 31411 Pacific Highway South in Federal Way. And you can bring up to three grocery bags or two banker boxes of documents to be shredded. Old TVs, CPUs, monitors, laptops, and cellphones will also be accepted for safe disposal, and a small fee may apply to some electronic items such as printers or VCRs. So recycle. Thank you.
Very good. Council President?
I just want to make a public service announcement for, please consider becoming an organ donor. I think you can do that on the back of your driver's license when you go to renew it. My granddaughter died three years ago, and this week we got a letter from the young man who received her heart. So it was emotional that, as it all was for us, it was wonderful to hear from the person who is continuing to live their life. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Great job, everybody on the, on the council and with the public. Thank you. We got a lot done today.
Yeah, we did.
We're adjourned.